This is our first meeting back in person in two years, which is wild. So it's great to see, I've had the pleasure of seeing some of y'all at different times in person, but this is really special to be able to come back. Looking at the numbers for our county and the state look really good right now. It's, you know, fingers crossed and all that stuff, but so it's great. It's great that we're here. Thank you all. Thank you all for being here. And thanks to my council members for being here as well. I'll just go off with a couple announcements. First of all, every five years, we have to update our comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan is like a long-range plan that lays out what your policies and plans are for the future. It's a 10-year plan that you updated every five years. And so our update is due February of next year, but there's a whole process we have to go through, including some public hearings to get input from folks. So our first public hearing will be May 9th at 7:00 PM here at City Hall. The purpose is to brief the community on the process for developing the comprehensive plan, or in this case, updating the comprehensive plan, and to obtain input on the proposed planning process. And we encourage residents, business owners, or any other stakeholders, our farmers market folks, whomever has an estate in the town to come and attend that. It's not exclusively for registered voters or anything like that. It's for all stakeholders to come and to want to offer up your comments, your ideas, and suggestions. So we welcome you all to be there on May 9th. The second item, just really more of an announcement, that we haven't really taken concrete steps yet to implement the decision that was made at our last voting session to remove the several of the memorial signs and monuments around the city that represent sort of a false narrative about our history. And so we just wanted to let y'all know, since we had mentioned we were going to discuss it, and I'll take any comments and thoughts people have, but the intent is to, and I know, Jody, you were looking at how we might move, for example, the granite monument that's at the cemetery, which is quite substantial, and where we might store that, and looking at, you know, what else do we need? Like the monument on, or the plaque panels on Watco Street have bolts in the back. We've got to make sure we can pull that off. So just kind of really more taking an assessment of things before taking any action on them. But that's, I don't have any other updates on that.
I think we have to use the microphone for the stream. The Watco Street sign is one panel, actually, I believe, so that does make it more difficult to move. But we had noticed that it was originally installed through the Georgia Historical Commission, which became a state agency, I think around maybe the '60s, and was dissolved in 1976. So the Georgia Historical Society in Savannah has taken over jurisdiction of all those signs from the previous commission that are the roadside signs, for sure. So I've contacted the Savannah office, and they actually have a lady there whose job is mainly looking after these roadside signs and the historical markers in general. So they were a little unsure whether they had jurisdiction over a sign like the Watco sign, so they're researching that right now. So just wanted to let you know we're looking into that.
Anybody have any questions or comments about that?
I don't know. Do I need to do this?
Yes, please.
No, I don't know how to do this.
Turn on the red, just hit the red button.
The red button?
And then you can edit out.
Okay, I was just wondering, it's not working.
Blue button.
Blue button?
If you just go down, just press the blue button.
Okay. I was wondering, who do we have that's going to be verifying all of the information this time, as far as making sure everything is accurate, and we don't have to do this again?
One of the things we're going to do is go through, at least based on what was discussed in the work session and what I, you know, hopefully has been communicated to you all, is to have a series of community dialogues, community sessions that would be facilitated by a third party to get input from our community, particularly from our African-American community here in Oxford, those who are descendants of enslaved persons and others that, whose, you know, history has been essentially left out of some of the markers and some of the telling of Oxford history. So it's going to, it's more about the process of getting a good understanding of what is the narrative that we want to put forward going forward, what are the stories we want to make sure we lift up, who are the people that we want to make sure that we are memorializing or remembering in these different monuments, and then coming up with an action plan of what that will look like as we begin to put things back into the community that say, here's our story, here's, here are the people that we want to acknowledge and say. So it's going to be more of a, I think of it more as like this consensus process of getting input, and then once we have some draft language, a pretty exhaustive vetting process of that language to make sure that we are getting it right, and it's not just a group, a small group of, you know, experts or history buffs or whatever, you know, interested parties that really is vetted within the community. Is anybody having a counter if you hear that?
I was just wondering if it would be a good idea to contact Mark that
Osslerger?
That does so much work in that regard. It might be helpful.
Yeah, he's, we're kind of in conversation with him and have been in that, for one thing, Bill, even before he came down here, had met Mark. He's a descendant, or kind of offshoot descendant of Bishop James Andrew, so he had had communication with him. And then Avis Williams is in pretty frequent contact with him, and they co-authored a paper. He was down in October for the seminar that they had at the college. So he's kind of been in the conversations. He brought one of the descendants over to where the house used to sit. So yeah, I think we want, you know, he's, since he's done, like you said, a lot of the history, like we've got a lot of names of descendants that are people that were here during those, you know, initial years when people were enslaved here. We've got a lot of those names thanks to the families, so we have to incorporate that. Yeah. Anybody else? So that's kind of the story. I don't know if anybody has any questions about that. I know we brought it up and voted on it at our works, at our formal session, but I will say that the Covington News, with all due respect, they were quite inaccurate, and even though I gave them a very specific recount of what signs or monuments we were talking about, they got it wrong. There's no granite monument on Watco Street. The markers or monuments, however you want to call them, sort of a mix match, are the one at Watco Street, which is a large, I used to think it was three panels, but like you said, Bill, it's just one single panel, but it's three columns. The one here at City Hall, right there, right outside that door on Clark Street, the one that is behind the old church that marks the slave house that is referred to as Kitty's Cottage, the one across Westy Street from the old church that was put in as part of the Heritage Trails. It's sort of like you stand there and you read it, and you see that the old church is across the street on Westy Street. And then the last one is the large granite stone at the old historic cemetery. It's right next to the oak tree that tells that familiar narrative about Captain Boyd, known as Kitty. So those are the items that we'll be removing, and then we'll be revisiting what we're going to put forward. Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, was the slide of the Monument at the Confederate Cemetery on campus listed?
That was not even discussed by us. I know that it has been an issue for students who walk down to it and they see it says "Our Soldiers" on the big middle obelisk or whatever, but that was not a part of our discussion. That, I don't know that anyone has done the research to actually get like a D to certify this, but the Emory University and Oxford College have kind of taken ownership. It's seemingly on their property. And so when the cemetery was vandalized a couple of years ago with the several stones uprooted and broken, they paid to have that restored, and they put up some cameras and so forth. So they're the stewards of that, and so I know that the dean is in conversations, he's in head conversation with me about it, and, you know, we can talk at some point if they want us to be more actively involved in that, but at this point, that's not something that we're looking at. We looked at just what's on City property. All right? Well, we have a full agenda, so we're trying to move through two things. Trees, Parks, and Recreation, Cheryl, can you come up?
We have been busy. First of all, April 9th, Mr. Waring and Scotty, who was wonderful, and Marcia and I and Ms. Benson and Juanita Carson. Unfortunately, Juanita and I did a little bit because we couldn't lift those things, but Jeff and Scotty got the fencing completely finished. This has been a project that's been going on for about seven years, that we've been trying to get this done. So that was done. The main planting and pruning projects that we had are almost, they're complete. We've got some little ones left to do, but really, we've got a lot of our big things done. And I'm so grateful to Mr. Waring for pursuing this and y'all paying back, please, quick.
Well, and I'm blanking on the name of the company that's doing the invasive species removal. They've started
Reef Forest Atlanta.
Reef Forest Atlanta.
Yes.
Which I didn't realize, I'm blanking on the guy's first name, but he's a Cowan.
Michael.
Yeah, so he's like Barry Cowan was in my, you know, he's a local guy. So that's great to see that we've got a local, and he was very interested in talking to us about, you know, ongoing effort to, I know there are initiatives. Thank y'all.
And it's one of the things on our agenda for tomorrow night, too.
And I think they're gonna, they're supposed to come back a number of different times. There's like, I don't know, he called them sessions or whatever, they're going to come through, leaves of clearing of some of the invasive species herself. Great.
Hope it works, right?
Yeah. Anybody have any questions about Trees, Parks, and Recreation? Awesome. Bill, anything on the Planning Commission to raise up? I know you all were looking at a number of things. About you all, I mean, Planning Commission.
In terms of permitting, they just simply had a fence permit at the last meeting, but they are making progress on the National Green Building Standards, so they're kind of looking into what those mean, and we've had some communications with the Department of Community Affairs about how they treat that, and talking to Bureau of Veritas. And so at the next meeting, we're planning to have an in-depth conversation with Bureau of Veritas, and then from that, we'll be making a report to the council of what their findings are.
One thing, I know Council Wyndham had shared forward, I guess the International Building Code has now incorporated a zero-energy building code, which, you know, is great. And so we currently adopt by reference whatever the latest international energy conservation code is, but we want to look at that and see whether there are additional, how we might want to strengthen specifically the energy provisions and really promote that close to net zero houses.
I think we adopt as the state adopts, if I'm not mistaken.
I can't remember what our language is.
We can.
We want to make sure we have to keep coming back every year, it's like add a new one. Maybe it's as the state adopts a new one and we incorporate that.
Typically what we do, but we can go around that. We're not tied to that.
So I mean, the main idea there is we want to ensure that any households that are constructed in Oxford are of a high quality. It's, you know, gone are the days of thinking that the size of a house dictates the quality of the house. We've seen that in the past, you know, big houses that really were not of good quality. So we want to make sure we focus on the quality of the housing and make sure that the energy burden of anyone who's living in Oxford in these houses is rememized. Anybody else have any comments on that? Great. All right. TDA, Downtown Development Authority, Mike?
Next week will be our meeting, and we're going to have a hands-on with historical concepts that we contracted with, and then we're going to talk to them and get some ideas from them and share some of our ideas and see how we can progress with our development.
So the, I know before y'all sit down, you're going to do a little walkabout in the town green. Maybe that's something, if there is anyone who wants to walk about and hear some of that, that it's a public meeting, so if they could participate in that and
Yes, but it's not the town green as much as the downtown.
Down by the
Yeah, but it's sort of looking, taking a look at the site. The whole site.
And y'all, y'all meet down there at the Watco Building to start at 6:00?
6:00.
6:00. So if you want to go participate in that, 6:00 PM, 26th?
That's Tuesday.
Tuesday. Down at Watco Building, which is the old City Hall. Anything else? Any questions of the Downtown Development Authority, Mike? Okay. Sustainability Committee?
So we're continuing to review the Streets and Trails Plan. Our next meeting, not much has changed for us because our next meeting is actually Monday from 4:00 to 5:30, and we're also cultivating a couple of new members. And we are starting, I referred to this at the last meeting, monthly invasive removal events, but we will not be able to kick that off this year. It looks like we're just too constrained by time. We won't have those over the summer because we hope to use a lot of student and community service help, so there is likely to be a kickoff probably in August, and then we'll hope to have events, community events, monthly after that. And that's all that I have today.
I know, Mike, Michael, Cowan, he was saying that we might talk to the social clubs at the high schools about being, because they have service hours, but maybe some of them might be interested in offering like some service.
Actually, we're talking to the Career Academy, Cecily, I can't remember the last name, but she is, they definitely have a forestry class that's focusing on ecology and this sort of thing, how it fits into a healthy forest system. So we definitely will have their participation, and then of course, the college. But yeah, so other, the other high schools, it would be great to cultivate some community service relationships with them as well.
Didn't rip it up, did it?
Yes. Have we seen it?
Have we seen it? Yeah, dig up the proof files and that. Great. Anybody have any questions of Laura or about Sustainability? Great. Okay, so that's it for committee reports. Next item is to look at Giles' property and just talk about a request that has come from the Giles family. We have Vicki Giles here, wife of Bruce Giles, who unfortunately passed away two years, or a year and a half ago.
2018.
2018, 2018, right. And then her daughter passed away last summer, and, but they, this property has been in the Giles family for, really since the town was founded, and you all got a copy of the letter that provides some of that history. So Vicki, I don't know if you wanted to say a couple of words. I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you just want to be able to answer questions that you might have.
I didn't prepare anything, but Yaw Beach received a letter that does detail the four generations of history and the actual love of that land, and we were so excited that that is now going to be a park. And so it was, we thought, we talked to family, how wonderful it would be and how much meaning to our families if it could be called
That's all right.
Giles Park. Or something similar to that. And he mentioned that there would be this small gazebo and maybe some park benches as people walked down the trail, and we thought maybe some of those could commemorate my daughter and also some of the other people who lived and loved on that land. So that was kind of my request, and we're here to answer your questions, I'm representing them, because I live in Dallas and have over 30 years.
So yeah, it was real touching to meet with the family and hear the stories of their family and the history, and I mean, the, being able to purchase the property from you all, that's property we've been looking at for a long time and saying, gosh, you know, we'd hope that it doesn't become something that is sort of contrary to our desire to protect the creek and maintain our nature.
And the serendipity of the wholesale just kind of made us even feel like maybe this is what's supposed to happen, because it was just somebody's, I don't know if y'all want to know the details.
Sure.
Okay, so it turns out
I'm sorry, would you mind maybe just stepping up just so that I'll make sure people, that might be, I don't know that we have anybody watching, but if there is anybody that can hear on the
I can hear.
So yeah, so be close.
Okay. Yeah, so the family decided to sell the land, the property, and the person who was picked out to be their realtor, our realtor, the brothers, was, it turned out to be, went to high school at Evanile High with Bob Giles, who was one of the brothers. And then it also turned out that she was the mother of my daughter who just recently passed away, best friend. So all of that kind of started, and then it just, more things happened. We were able to meet with you, and it went so well, and it just tiny little things that mean so much to our family. And in researching, there's the four generations who have just really been a big part of Oxford, and that you do see in your, in the letter you've written it, seen it. Do you have any questions, or is there something else?
I was just going to say that Debbie, I'm trying now, I'm starting to blank on her last name.
Debbie.
The realtor.
Yes.
She came out when I was signing the documents, you all approved, you signed the closing documents and all, and we had a great conversation. She raised the question of, would the council consider
Chelsea Park.
Memorializing the land, you know, the park part of that for Chelsea, and she told me about Chelsea.
And we thought how great it would be, Chelsea Park.
Yeah.
But it also, you know, we're thinking about it, that the, you know, the family is very, there's four generations, and they were very active in Oxford and Newton County as well, and it would, it just seems more appropriate to ask for Giles and then put some commemorative things that were distasteful and lovely and, you know, that goes with the beauty of the nature of the trail. And that's, that's kind of my request, our request.
Anybody have any questions or any thoughts, any hesitations to?
With all due respect, and about the history and your family, and we appreciate the property. In fact, I tried to sell it one time. And in the past, we have customarily not named parks after people. And what we've done, and we had the same issue at Asbury Park when we created that park, to put up a plaque, which to me is more meaningful because you can get more explanation on it about what's going on. And regardless of what you do, you're going to offend somebody when you start naming parks and places after people. And so I, I think a plaque would be more appropriate, in my opinion.
Actually, I appreciate so, Ben, for those of the council sometime back, we went through the same thing, I believe, the Sims family, when we were trying to buy a park and do the park on what we had. And that's when we decided, no, that wouldn't be the right thing to do, maybe we'll do a plaque. So I think we're kind of locked in. I don't see how we can now come back and do something that we said we couldn't do for this Sims family for another time.
I do know that with that property, there were a couple of different family names that were involved. You know, we purchased the one on the corner from the Elliott family and all the various relatives there. We had then the Joyner, Ms. Joyner's property was the one on the corner of A1 and Watson Street, and then that middle one was the, maybe was, I'm trying to, I don't want to say steal, but anyway, that was another, and then I think there was another family name even. So it was like there wasn't really one family name with that area, and the whole area had been kind of called.
Yeah, but that wasn't the reason, because there were multiple names. The reason was that we didn't want to start a present or name a park after people.
And we had to come to terms with the Joyner family in particular, because that was a key track for the park, and through that, in the pavilion, we have a plaque that commemorates the family that's, that were there. And instead of naming it the Joyner Park, it has more information, and the people that actually used the park responded that information.
Anybody else have any thoughts or comments? I know we talked when I met with the family about the idea of, yeah, if you have something that where people could stop and take pause and read about the history of the land, that could be meaningful, and then like I said, there, we need to kind of go through some intentional design about what, how we want, because we want the property to be used in a nature way, right? We want people to wander through and enjoy nature through this property, and so having benches, having maybe some sort of a pavilion or gazebo that people can use, whether they use it for, I mean, on the sides, how useful it would be for what purposes, that that could be another opportunity for the memory, memory of Chelsea and Bruce and others. So I mean, I think there's, there's those individual opportunities, but just the, in this one instance, the fact that this, this parcel of land and a lot of, well, I think that at one time it was like 400 acres, was all in the Giles family. And you've got the house that's the Hubert, Dave Hubert, that's why it live in now, is referred to as the Giles House, and then some people call it the Giles Coker House because the Cokers lived there a while, but it was really the Giles House for, for, so anyway, those are just some considerations to bring forward. I don't know if I got a vote, but I want to make sure we kind of get out on a discussion on it and get a sense. Yeah, Mike?
Well, I kind of have to agree with the other council members about the name, the name, but I think it's very appropriate to have sections named for the individual Giles that are represented, rather than one big thing. I think it'd be more meaningful for the memory of those to have one section just named, but just have it as the nature park donated by the Giles family and have individual gazebos or other areas named.
Well, we talked about that. I mean, I know that we shot for the moon.
We did too. But if, but that also sounds like there would be a possibility of several members having moved over to
Yeah, so as we get, what I was here with you, as we begin to actually design how the park might look, and we start getting input, and we want to have you all participate in that and give your thoughts on that.
So y'all, so Giles Nature Park is probably a percent.
I think if we took a vote, it would sound like we would, but we're close on it, but definitely ways to memorialize with the different elements of the park and have some signage as a minimum, is that what I'm hearing?
And y'all did read the letters?
Oh, yeah, and I have to say, I really appreciated all the detail, because I think that's wonderful history, of interest to everyone who lives in Oxford. And stuff like that, I think absolutely should be included on, you know, the memorial plaque, so.
So being realistic, nothing's going to happen immediately. We've got a lot on our plate and a lot of things we've got to do, but our intention is not just to let it languish, and so, you know, my hope is over the next two years, we'll be, that whole corridor, we're going to be working on a number of things, so we'll be, I'll be in touch with you and get, keep you all very involved in that. Thank you so much.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item, wanted to just review the results from the Clark Patterson Lee Assessment, the Used Robotics Caving Assessment 2 rule, and that was put out in your packet on the wall here as sort of the summary. Bill, you want to go over that? Bill, you want to go over that?
The report, you know, is pretty straightforward. I think it's just showing the issues that we want to start tackling the roads that are even in good condition, kind of putting them on a calendar to have them looked at, you know, in future budgets. So right now, we're really trying to sort of tackle the, the roads at rate fair and poor that you can see up here as soon as possible. And so what they provided for us was basically looking at a five-year budget, and I've made a note here that, you know, that's based on typically you have your capital budget based on a SPOST, and most SPOSTS are five to six years. We can certainly elongate this plan. I've asked them to sort of look at putting this into a 10-year timeframe to see how that might look. And of course, the note that I have at the bottom just makes the point that, you know, the further out you go, the more unclear your, your unit pricing is for different materials and labor. And you also run the risk of, you know, your, your good roads, your fair roads kind of slipping into lower, lower ratings. And as the road becomes, a poorer rating becomes less stable and is more apt to deteriorate even faster, you know, we have freeze saw and things like that. So, but overall, I mean, I think we're, we're obviously in a position to tackle this. It's not something that's overwhelming, whether we go from five to 10 years or something in between, so.
Why do we have blank places on Hull Street and going down Oxford Road? I mean, like Hull Street is certainly in the city limits, isn't it?
Yeah, this, yes. I mean, this part here.
Well, right there, that's the back of the portion, right there. Right there.
From Clark, so. Yeah, so what she's talking about is where from on Hull Street connection with Soul Street, for example, and on Clark Street, there's like this, looks like a gap in the assessment, but I'm sure.
Well, we don't believe that, we're not necessarily sure that's in the city limits. We know Oxford Road is not.
It's because it's at the border, there's this question of like, does it, because it's a border street, my contention is that it is because it's the town plan plotted that street.
The county doesn't see it that way because that's the way they've done this annexation work. So the county views it as being unincorporated.
So the county's going to take responsibility for that piece of Hull Street and...
We haven't had that discussion yet, but right now, that's unclear.
Okay. I was just curious because I have always thought of that, at least that section of Hull Street. I know that we've got going down Oxford Road, you know, it borders land that isn't in Oxford, but, yeah, okay.
So are we saying a part of Hull Street between Soul Street and Clark Street is not in the city limit?
Essentially from Oxford Road down to Soul Street is what you're talking about in particular is what's not. Because the, because the western boundary of it is county, unincorporated county.
Are you saying?
I'm not saying it.
I know.
I'm just trying to get you confused in there because Hull Street runs perpendicular to Oxford Road.
No, no, no. I mean, yes, yes, yes.
So now how are we saying, what are we saying, Debbie?
This is my concern. George and I have the same question.
I mean, I would say it's our road and I would, and I would point back to the survey of 1837 that, that founded our city, the western boundary of that right of way for Hull Street, that 30-foot right of way of Hull Street now, is, is, anything that happens in that 30 feet is ours. And so that's my contention, but I, I think that when you look at something that joins unincorporated, there's some question about whether there's shared responsibility or who has responsibility for that piece. Like when we were talking about Williams Road for improvements to accommodate the industrial development near, south of the airport, that the county had to be in that conversation because they, they unincorporated Newton County on the south side of Williams Road. It goes out, east Soul slash to Williams Road, it goes out to the front, that the unincorporated area on the south side of that road and the city of Covington on the north side, and so it was a joint responsibility.
Yeah, well, I, I thought the only thing that we did that way was going down off the road. We decided to, I think, incorporate one side of off the road that had no housing on it, but not the other side, which was, I can't, I've got no idea, but I would say, yeah. So I wondered, did we do the same thing on Hull Street, but honestly, why?
Sorry, just a quick, as you noted, we traditionally or historically taken care of pavement, all of that?
We have from Clark to Soul, the curb and everything, we always maintained, always paved. Now, the county's taking care of the tar and asphalt from there out to the dead ends on both sides.
Oh, really?
Yeah, from Clark out to the dead end going that way, and then from Soul to the dead end going that way. The county, if you look at it, it's just tar and rock, the county does that.
Interesting, okay.
And we've always maintained from Clark to Soul, paved every bit of it.
I mean, we've looked at, I've talked to two attorneys and we've looked at the state law and, and the state law seems to say that when you have the county on one side and the city on the other, then it would be a county road. But there is some thought that technically the one side of the road could be city, but that's highly unusual because you have stormwater management on both sides of the road and it becomes sort of complicated for two jurisdictions to handle that. So we're still, and we haven't had a conversation with the county to see how they feel about it, but we're looking to do that.
This wasn't addressed by that small fortune we spent having that thing surveyed?
The survey delineated what is the right, what's the city property, yes.
Okay, well, that should answer our question, should it not?
One would think.
You and I would think that, but apparently, as Bill said, there are attorneys who say that reading the law, that it tends to be interpreted a different way.
I thought that was what the engineer's supposed to do, is the survey crew was to address that in some manner. But I must, I've given to understand that there's another place in the city that has essentially the same problem. Is that not something that was on Moore Street?
Yes, sir, that's right.
So I'm a little disappointed that our survey did not cover that.
What, what I remember distinctly, Robert Jordan saying that there are some questions of legal nature he cannot resolve for us, but he can certainly tell us where the rights of way is. But if it's a legal question about who's responsible for maintenance of the road, that would be beyond his.
That may be, but what line did he draw there is what I'm asking, what I think is being asked, you know?
Well, he's delineated the right of way for sure, but he didn't answer the question of ownership on some of these roads because it's just legally unclear.
Okay, so he didn't do the right of way?
Well, he did delineate the right of way physically on the map, but he didn't necessarily answer the question of ownership.
So if the road is like floating in the middle of the right of way and the city owns the right of way, you see what I'm saying? Like there, there is some, one thinks, or one supposes that there is a piece of, a strip of right of way on the west side of Hull Street.
Given, I agree, given that we own what is called the right of way, we own it, be simple. If, we don't own the right of way, we own the land.
Yeah.
And we call it the right of way. Any other city, you own some of the bundle of rights, and that's why it's called rights of way. So, you know, that's not the case here. We own it flat out.
I think for all practical purposes, we maintain it, we're gonna view it as ours and, and so we're gonna need to schedule maintenance of it. I think the condition of it is the same as the indication of the other parts, it's in pretty good shape right now. Would you say, Jody, is that, that one's in?
I think it's fair.
In any event, there was, you know, quite a bit to bring up to, you know, bring up to standard. And the first year is a big chunk of the cost, the overall cost was like four million dollars, nearly five million dollars, four point four million dollars. So, yeah, so we're gonna get from them what a schedule of a 10-year schedule would look like, I don't know, maybe we could do a seven or seven and a half, but just because you've gotta make some assumptions about escalating costs and that, that it's not a straight math problem.
One, one follow-up on that. The, what a chunk, chunk of money, but something that we have to face and take care of. But are we not involved in some discussion about having SPOST approved for next year? So did, when this, when this headline match?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, you're right, that when we look at what our priorities are for SPOST, that maybe we want to prioritize some road improvements because we've been fortunate enough to get a lot of our water and sewer projects done through other means. Yeah, that could be. We also, Bill, this is, I guess, a question I wasn't entirely sure of. We know that, that East Clark Street essentially needs to be, I mean, it's never really been made into a street in any sort of, brought to standard way, so it's the worst-conditioned strip. And we've had it in our, in our work plan to do, we, and we pressed pause a time or two on that, but then I think most recently, we, we were kind of thinking that we would get a redesign of it where it had swales instead of gutters and, and drainings, that we just create a nice, a nice road bit that goes back there, but not the one that was envisioned when we were thinking about subdivision being back down. Is that...
No comment.
Yes, I, I...
So basically making it an actual road to some road standard instead, more similar to other roads in Oxford than the way it is right now, which is a... Now, we'll say that there are, that it's come more to my attention that there are other places in Oxford where we see some inequity in the condition of the roads. And I'd like to have a conversation with the people that live on those sections. And we were just talking about Hull Street, that when you look at Hull Street, particularly from Soul to Watson, there's a bit of it that's got some pavement on it or some maybe starred gravel, and then it becomes grass, but people are still using that to access their properties. And so, you know, I think we need to kind of get that on our radar and...
So, but did I just understand, Jody, to say that the county takes responsibility for that stretch?
If you look at it, there's not much they're taking responsibility for.
There's not much, it's just a tar gravel road, but they go...
It doesn't go home.
No, I completely agree that it needs to be...
Clark South to the dead end and they go from Soul North to the dead end.
Yeah, yeah.
But the reality is, there's no dead end, it just, I mean, it, it, it could go all the way through to Richardson, but I mean, even, even the topography, you could at least have a paved access between Watson and Soul that we don't have. And I just, I don't know whether they want it or care to have it, but I think we kind of owe the conversation to happen and say, you know, we realize you guys live on kind of a, a neglected road and we want to renew that.
That'll bring up another question. Is it really an Oxford road? Because we've had some of these discussions on some other property about who it belongs to and who should maintain it.
Well, the cert, yeah, and certainly the survey helped to delineate where it actually is, like we discovered that the, where our pump, our list station is, for example, we thought was in the right of way for Hull Street, but it turns out it's not, it's actually on private property and so was that, that issue as well, yeah. So this, the survey gave us a good place to start some conversations. It was at the end.
Well, that was certainly a circular conversation on Clark, East Clark Street.
Speaking of Clark Street, Hull Street.
Not to mention East George.
Oh, gosh, sorry. That's a whole other bundle of joy there, so, yeah.
Why is East George? I don't see the East George.
It doesn't exist, but it's that whole driveway.
Yeah, which I think is the...
We keep talking about East George, it's just made in the street because it's not a street.
No, we need to not make, we need to make sure it's not on the map, it's being on the street until or unless it's actually made in the street. And I was told by two-thirds of the property owners, three-quarters of the property owners, that they did not want, they liked it being the driveway and not a street.
Great, so you're right, it's a dialogue we need to have.
But we still have an issue, a water link issue that we haven't, that we haven't resolved yet. Plus, there's just a lot of complexity to that conversation.
Mr. May, can I make a comment? I'd like to see this thing somewhat resolved because if our police department goes out on a call and doesn't know that the finding area of what he is responsible for, we could be in trouble for his sake and for ours. And I think it needs to be defined, really know where these streets end and where we have a responsibility to. Because if you don't, it's putting Mark and the very, Chief of Police in a very bad position, in my opinion. So it needs to be resolved somewhere.
At this point, we've determined not to run radar on Oxford Road or the Moore side after you, you know, cross down this point here.
On Moore Street, past Carlton Trail?
Well, it's actually, I think maybe before Carlton Trail, but...
Well, that's, if that's the case, that's fine, but we need to probably make sure that that area is defined for him if, if it hasn't been already, so that he knows where he's at. I mean, that would be my feeling.
I mean, all we've been able to determine almost for sure at this point is if we would have jurisdiction with the police department on the, if you will, the northern side of the road, the Oxford side of the road on, on Moore, and then the southern side or the Oxford side on Oxford Road also, but we wouldn't have jurisdiction on both lanes.
Definitely fewer houses on Oxford Road that are in our jurisdiction than on Moore Street probably.
So we have a sign there that says Oxford City Limits. So is that really Oxford City Limits or half Oxford City Limits? So one half of Oxford City Limits?
Are they right?
Oxford is right.
We're getting there, yeah.
That's what we're looking into, I mean, it's unclear at this point.
Yeah, I ask the chief all the time, is that if somebody's coming up on one side of the street, can you give them a ticket if they're not in East Clark? You know, I, he said that he had permission out there from the sheriff or something, they could police holler there.
I mean, I would defer to the chief on that, but I mean, you have to be deputized, I think, to write a, a ticket anywhere. You can't be deputized simply to write on one road, so the sheriff hasn't deputized any of our officers, and so I don't think that we would necessarily have jurisdiction in the county if the sheriff says so. You'd have to have a formal...
Yeah, but I mean, they, they used to write tickets all up and down, now they're all the time.
I'm aware of that.
I just, I just want the chief to understand and make sure that he's comfortable with what he's doing.
Yeah, no, we're, make sure if there's any areas of ambiguity and we need clarity and we are, or we do need to pursue that type of authorization, deputizing from the sheriff to be able to adequately police, you know, look, do look into.
Yes, yes, sir. So we have been looking at those lines in particular, and everything, we're gonna have a missed report here again, and like, quite frankly, as we had it a month ago, I was a little bit astonished about some of the citations that were written previously because I don't know of any jurisdictions. I mean, I think quite frankly, the law's the law, we need to interpret the law, we need to be able to ensure that we're enforcing that legally. And I don't really think, I mean, $185 for a citation for a stop sign ticket, that's a lot of money out of somebody's pocket. And we need to make sure that we're right before we do any kind of enforcing of the law. It's no different than arresting somebody illegal, in my opinion, if we give them a citation illegally, they don't know, but then we know. We have to make sure that we're right in order to do it properly, so we're, you're exactly right.
Thank you, Chief.
I'm with Jeff that I think we ought to turn some of this over to David Strickland and get something done about it and not let it drag out another five years, because that's, I think that's about how long ago that survey was done. And as a point of interest, it's listed as East George Street on the tax maps, and that's one of the things that confuses people. I'm just saying.
No, no, no.
All of this stuff needs to be straightened down, and we've been kicking the can down the road for quite a while, and...
It is all...
And that was the point of the survey, that we paid that kind of money so we could see where we were. This is where we are, and we need to do something about it.
Yeah. The other thing that we need to do with the survey results is to enter into conversation with people who have encroachments on city property and make sure that there is no ambiguity about that, because if someone has an encroachment on city property and loses their property from damage or whatever, they can't rebuild it on city property, so, and, you know, that we might just decide that we want it removed and it's within our right to do so. So there's no adverse possession on city property. So there's that too, Jim. I mean, we're, I don't know that we're gonna get into this, we're gonna talk in a minute about how much we've got going on and some need to kind of expand on that. So one, one take in, and the chief, I know he's got that point too, the city attorney and start trying to move forward on that.
I mean, in Mr. Jordan's defense, I mean, he, he did, for instance, Moore Street in itself is very complicated in that the city, in effect, has been exercising what... in that the city, in effect, has been exercising what they call prescriptive rights on the maintenance of that road, apparently for some number of years. So, Moore Street was never a part of the original layout or recording of the city. So, it doesn't have the recorded deed or, or, you know, the full rights that we have on the other right of ways that were recorded originally. So, you're right about that. But we don't necessarily have rights of way either, because the county, the city cannot have prescriptive rights from the county, because the county's a sovereign authority. So, the county can certainly allow us to maintain the road until they decide something otherwise. And so, what we're doing in terms of maintenance is probably okay. We can, we can maintain the road if the county's allowing us to do so. But what I was told is the county decided they wanted to rip up things in their right of way, then there would be nothing legally we could necessarily stop them from doing. But why would they do that? Because it would simply cost them money, so...
Well, it's, it's not just the county. And those apartments down there, we had a big brouhaha about water going in there. And I don't remember exactly what that was, but we were going in there and doing work on private property. It's what it sits, because it was our water lines. But in fact, it wasn't our water lines. And so, we had, well, it's a...
That's a separate issue.
It, it's all part of the same ball of wax from the history of this city, Bill. I'm not trying to contradict you or give you a hard time. But these kinds of, these kinds of conversations have been going on for, I know, sixteen years. So, you know, it's time we should clean some of this dust up, up, as it were, and, and get it, get it cleared up, get it squared away. So, these guys know exactly where they're supposed to be paving, where they're supposed to be writing tickets, and we're supposed to be running water lines, and the garbage truck's supposed to be going down that driveway and not going down that driveway? They don't come down my driveway and pick up mine? I mean, that, that's kind of the general idea of the whole thing.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah, they don't go down, the lady across the street, she's got a fairly long driveway. It's at least as long as East George Street. And why, they go down there and pick hers up? I mean, really, it's, it's just a matter of fairness and doing what the city's supposed to be doing in the right way that it's supposed to be doing. And it's not up to these guys to make those decisions, it's up to us. I've had my say.
All right, so, any other questions about the pavement assessment? I mean, we're, again, we're going to be, we'll come back with the elongated pavement schedule, and we're integrating this into the capital budget, so... All right, next item, want to bring forward a request to change the police vehicle order. Chief, you want to just come up with a quick give up?
So, I guess this kind of goes into your pavement assessment. Unfortunately, I hate to bring up a sore subject again. However, so, the council approved the purchase of a vehicle, a hybrid vehicle, from Allen Vigil Ford with T-Slot's money. That vehicle's been on order, and it's been on order, and it's been on order. Well, the vehicles have suddenly began to die. Within the last month, we spent seven thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars on the repair of the vehicle. We got three thousand two hundred eleven dollars that are needing repair of a vehicle. What are they being repaired of? Shocks, rear struts, front struts, and the front end. Just about all the electronic steering gears on those vehicles are out. So, after just doing some research, we've been in contact, I've been in contact with Allen Vigil Ford. They can never give us a production date. When is this vehicle going to be here? They keep saying it's a part, it's a hybrid vehicle. So, I just looked around at some of the old quotes, and I call it Brandon Motors in Unadilla, Georgia. They do have the vehicle, a vehicle, and it's stock, a hybrid vehicle that we were looking at. So, we request to change the order from Allen Vigil Ford to Brandon Motors. The difference is nine hundred and eighty-six dollars for purchase of this hybrid vehicle. So, why do we need the vehicle? Well, it's going to enable us to have a vehicle that's going to be operable. So, we have, do have a liability if we have vehicles that are not safe. If I'm driving the vehicle or another officer, which we have a third officer coming on board to me. One of the officers is driving the vehicle, they lose control because of the steering, it's not working. You're going to get an injured officer, and if we injure the public, we're just liable for those as well. If we know the vehicle's unsafe, we got to repair it. So, currently, we have four vehicles ranging from ninety-eight thousand five hundred eighty-six, and the lowest vehicle we have is seventy-one thousand seven hundred fifty miles on it. While they're older, they've been around a long time, but the roads are really rough. The roads are extremely rough if you go to Oxford Square. And you're looking around as you're driving, you're watching the road, but you hit quite numerous potholes if you haven't been through there in a while, right over there. Even down here off of East Wade and back toward that area, it's kind of rough. So, we do request to have that vehicle order changed from Allen Vigil to the Brandon Motors.
And Chief, you had, sorry, you had mentioned, mentioned a modification on the light system that you were going to put on that might actually reduce the cost of equipping the vehicle, so it might not actually be net more expensive.
Well, yes, so, after researching the vehicle and some of the quotes that were there, a two thousand dollar bar for a lights on top is not necessary. Five or six, maybe even close to a thousand dollar light bar is, is sufficient enough to emit their proper lighting that's required by the state law to project it. So, there's a lot of things that are going to change. As you see these vehicles now, there's a lot of lights across the dashboard, and all of them, they're really not necessary, because the lights on the roof emit enough light. Besides that, it deflects your defrost, you can't see the defrost because it blocks the defrost, and you get the side, but you don't get the center. So, we have a couple of issues with that. But we are going to change quite a bit of it, and unfortunately, there is cost in these vehicles. There are things that you have to supply, put into them to make them safe for transport of the prisoners and to make them safe for the officer. Like I said, unfortunately, the equipment is wearing and is outdated. We get quite a lot of things that we'll go into in another session as we get closer to it.
So, it's basically, it's a, we can wait for undetermined time, or we can just go ahead and then, God, let's go ahead and do it, and it'll cost us a little more, but maybe it'll cost us...
I mean, it's the same reason that we discussed and discussed and discussed, we did for last year.
Yes, you confirmed an order last summer.
So, what's the problem with, with, because we already put it in the way that already?
Because we, we voted to accept a particular bid for the vehicle, and it's changing. It'll be a little more, so I just want to make sure everybody's okay with that.
How quickly are we going to be able to get the Unadilla one?
They have the vehicle in stock. I sent them a letter of intent, and they said they would hold it for us.
Now, is that fully equipped? I'm not very well...
That's not fully equipped. So, we do have to get quotes for some of the other equipment, which I have sent out some quotes, but I haven't gotten the request back yet. But like I said, some of the things, we need to make sure that we're doing properly in the cars. The cars we have now have a gun rack in the middle. It's okay, but we need to be able to secure that weapon. It needs to be secured in the rear. If it's not secured in an armor box, which is opened by a key, it's done for a couple of reasons. You don't really want to have a patrol rifle in the front. Do you need a patrol rifle? There's a time and a place for that if it ever happens. Let's just pray it never does. But if you have a patrol rifle, you want to have it in an armory in the back of the car, because you don't want some officer jumping out on a traffic stop or checking an alarm, holding a rifle. It is something, it's just not feasible. So, we do have some things we're going to want to change in these vehicles as we go forward. Of course, off the budget, but we're not asking for any more at this time. We are asking for nine hundred eighty-six dollars for this vehicle that is a stock vehicle. The lighting system is going to be a little bit, a lot cheaper than what was previously quoted of almost twelve, thirteen thousand dollars, so we're going to bring that cost down quite a bit.
Chief, are we having a problem with repairing our cars?
Repairing our cars? We're not having a problem with repairing them. What we do have a problem with is our time. So, if we take the vehicle, it takes two of us to take a car and drop it off. The vehicle that I'm operating now, I had to get four tires on. Well, we have to go to Brownbridge Road, we drop it off, they repair it, then we go back and we pick it up. So, we take two people out of a commission. We can repair these cars, but we will need to increase the budget next year for the vehicle repair. The vehicle, the repairs that I've requested thus far, what's left in that portion of the budget, I know we have more money in the police budget, but what's the remainder of the repairs for the vehicle? There's not enough money in there to repair what we've got out now. It's just a little bit more than what we have remaining. So, we are going to have to make sure we do adjust that going forward. The one vehicle that needs the three thousand and two hundred eleven dollars work needed the seventeen hundred dollars work back in twenty-one when he requested the original vehicle that you, that you guys approved. It's just, I don't know why Allen Vigil can't get the car in. I think they may not be a volume dealer, or maybe it's just because we're the low people on the pole. You know, a low man always gets short end of the stick, so if you're buying one car, that's not a big priority for a larger dealer. But the Brandon Motors, apparently, they deal in several types of vehicles, and I know they wanted a hybrid Ford, so that's, that's the best one we could go with at this point.
Have you run into any problems getting the parts for these repairs? Because I know that's been an issue for other people.
Fortunately, we have not. The one vehicle, the front end of my car, that car was five thousand two hundred twenty-four dollars of work for the repairs and the tires. They did have to order those parts from the Ford dealer, and it took about two days to get those in.
I just have a follow-up question. First off, I think we just need to go ahead and say yes to nine hundred eighty-six dollars, because that's what originally was being asked. But as a follow-up, what is the sequencing of what car is going to be dropped off from your inventory when you replace this, and what do you see going forward to having to do?
That's a great question, because we were just discussing this earlier. Do we get rid of the car that has the most mileage? That just got fifty-two hundred dollars worth of work? Or do we repair the car that has eighty-seven, eighty-seven thousand miles on it? And add thirty-two hundred dollars worth of work to it and maintain that vehicle? Or do we maintain the one that we have? So, the, the variables are in the air. It's almost as if you need maybe add one extra spare vehicle that you would have to, just in case. So, just to give you an idea, the other vehicle we have repaired, so we got in it, as I was driving, and I turned the lights on, I was directing traffic. If you would, we'd go, and the power went out, the light bar don't work. So, the lights are out. And the biggest issue with that is that we got to drive that vehicle foresight. And we got to drop it off, or we got to sit and wait for it foresight. That's a long time for that to be repaired. So, we are going forward, trying to find something that's a little closer, maybe, a little more convenient to where we can have these lights worked on. But we're going to have to really weigh the difference to see which vehicle's going to be more suitable to keep or to drop off. That answered the question.
Well, I guess in a roundabout way, yes.
Yes, so, I mean, if we, if we receive a vehicle now and we sold a vehicle, we're still going to be at four.
Well, I understand that. You're going to have to put this new vehicle in somebody's hands.
Sure.
So, right now, there's two choices, right?
Yeah, well, there's, we're, we're going to have three. And, and going forward is that, and we still have to look at how we want to structure this apartment. So, we got, we're sliding for four positions, myself and three. I've been toying with the idea, do we want to hire another full-time to make it three full-time? Or do we want to have another full-time and maybe two part-time? So, if we did hire a two-part-time, we would need a vehicle that they would use while they're at work.
Well, it's why I'm standing that you have a fleet of five, you know?
Five vehicles, we have four vehicles, and we have a truck. We have the, there's the Dodge pickup truck that we have, and then we have four patrol cars.
So, it'll be five.
There'll be five of the new ones coming in, yeah?
There will be, yes.
So, then we have a spare in there?
Yes, there will, correct.
Well, do we need that pickup truck and the golf cart and the trailer and the, and all the other stuff that we...
Well, going, that, looking at that, I was looking at that as well, and depending on how we go forward with the fleet, we did talk about going with an electric vehicle. We talked about the Mustang Mach-E, and that's a great car, but it's a pilot vehicle. It's not a production vehicle, it's not a pursuit-rated vehicle, it's not a police vehicle yet. I did some research, we talked the other day about the New York Police Department, and they did get a hundred and forty-eight of those cars as part of the prior administration. Mayor de Blasio's plan to electrify the city in 2035, two hundred million dollars. And as I read through this article, it's a recent article, I'd be glad to send it to you. They can't put a police cage in there because of the size. So, it brings the compartment down. Now, not every police officer is just as big and tall as I am, so we all come in different sizes. If you can only imagine having to sit in this chair here, right here for a work session and not moving or being comfortable. That's kind of what it's like being in a police car, because you, I mean, I'm, it, my car's squished for me. So, many of you may have met or not met Lieutenant Larry White yet, but he's a big, or Lieutenant Wes Moreland. He's a big guy. The other gentleman we're going to hire, he's a big guy. So, we have to just go forward with that. But if we don't need it, my thought process is, well, if we have an SUV, if we need to pull a trailer, we can pull it. Then if it gets to be really heavy, Jody's got enough vehicles that we, if we needed to pull that utility trailer along. So, I was thinking of getting rid of the truck as we go forward. The golf cart, I don't know. That's really kind of a public relations type thing. Do we need it? Could we use it? It's possible, and it's might, something, I guess it kind of goes back to our bike patrol for riding the golf cart, where we're going to get to. So, we do, going forward, we're going to look at that. But there is a utility trailer. I don't necessarily know that that trailer needs to be designated strictly for a police department, because it just hauls the cones. I think it could be a utility trailer if Jody needed to use it, it could be for him. If it isn't closed, I don't necessarily see it need to be marked, because we're not enforcing the law. Is that right?
Thank you.
Did that answer all of it?
You did, pretty much, because I've just been curious about it, and they, some of them are just sitting down there most of the time, not really doing anything.
Correct, that's why it was better for us. We did have two tires stored in Jody's building, and I, she asked, why do we have the tires? And he kind of talked about it. Well, once I found a state dealer with a state contract off of Brownbridge Road, we don't need to buy no tires and take them upstairs. We call them, if they don't have them, they'll get them there within a day. We just take the car and they can, no need for us to buy some rubber and let it rot upstairs, hoping we can put them on.
What's the oldest car you have, Chief?
I would say the oldest car we're having right now, well, besides the truck, is the vehicle that I have, which is a fourteen, I believe, here.
A twenty-fourteen?
I think it, maybe a thirteen, let me just...
So, we had a twenty-thirteen, yes?
It's a twenty-thirteen. We have two twenty-thirteen vehicles. Both of them are four-tars, and then we go to a twenty-fifteen and a twenty-sixteen. So, the twenty-fifteen is the vehicle that I'm operating now. That one has the ninety, ninety-eight thousand dollars in it.
Well, it's, are these, do you think these cars are lasting the way the cars that say at DeKalb County? That you're getting the same kind of service out of them?
Well, you're probably getting more here, and only, you're going to get a better, well, let me just go back. So, previously, before, we had a take-home car in DeKalb County, we had a fleet of about five hundred vehicles.
Yeah.
And they ran twenty-four hours, seven days a week, where I drive it, and then you drive it, and then Mr. George drives it. Well, Mr. George, he likes to drive fast, so he don't drive it, he's not going to take care of that car, where I like to baby it, and you kind of just like, whatever. So, but we also had a shop, where you just drive down there, you drop it off, they say, here's your key, take another car, and you're going about your business. We'd have to go through cars about every three or four years then. But you're talking about a hundred officers a year driving that car. Since they did move into their take-home vehicles, the cars have gotten a little bit better. Now, they have had some dangers. They bought some cars they shouldn't have purchased that turned out to be horrible for them, and then they all went to the fleet of Tahoe. But going forward, I mean, you have to get the vehicles repaired. You've got to make sure you're paying for the repairs, getting the oil changed, getting the brakes changed and all that. One of the cars we had changed on the brakes, they said, those are the original brakes. And that was a twenty-sixteen.
That seems scary.
That's very scary. So, we have to make sure that we maintain them. If it says a brake check every six thousand miles or seven thousand miles, you just change it, but...
I don't keep going on with you there, I know you've got other things to do with it. How many miles was it on that? You said never changes. Perfectly, you go in twenty-sixteen, and maybe like by twenty-seventeen, you don't have forty-five thousand miles.
That vehicle has eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven miles on it.
So, it's your recommendation at this point not to sell the additional vehicle once we get the new one? And just keep it as...
We, we should have a spare.
And that would be the spare?
Yes, ma'am.
With the new person coming on?
If he's got additional officers, then he'll need, he'll need the four he's got plus the spare.
The new person that's coming on is going to have to get the vehicle that needs a light bar repaired on it that's eight thousand or eighty-seven thousand miles. The other vehicle we have that needs the three thousand miles on it, there's some kind of a leak somewhere. We're going to have to get it cleaned out on the inside, because it's moldy. That technically, right, that is the spare vehicle right now. That's the white vehicle that we have. So, we, we, we need to make sure all of the equipment is functioning.
We're going to get the light bar fixed, my life before you do it, because it's a wreck.
Yes, sir, we kind of figure out how to get down there to get it repaired.
Yeah, precisely.
Yeah, I would like to say, I would like to see us keep the golf cart? Because I know that I ran into our last chief several times on the trail. You know, and I think it's nice that we have the ability to quickly police or, or at least cruise.
I just wanna make a comment on that golf cart. That is a pedestrian.
Right, it's not a patrol cart, but like as far as just, I don't know.
We need to be cautious with that, because I don't, I don't, I mean, that's when you're mixing a golf cart with a pedestrian traffic. We gotta be very careful. Now, as far as the patrol, we're gonna work on that next year, but we working on that. We get the police officer, Mr. George. And we're gonna be looking for those bicycles for next year as we go forward. But we do wanna be careful for that. And the quick patrol on it, it's a good idea, it's a great idea to have that? If we have to get there. But if we don't have it out, then we gotta go pull it out.
By the time, he might have just ridden the bike down there or run down.
Correct.
Sure, sure. No, I get it, I get it. But I think that also just having an occasional presence keeps people warrier who might choose to do non-ethics.
Yes, ma'am, I agree with that. And it's, but we have to be careful of how we get to.
Well, listen, we've got such a big agenda, and I know we got one more thing for the chief.
One more than it.
And, and I was just committing to chief, I know he's going through kind of systematic, trying to get the house in order, trying to move things forward. So thank you, and they keep bringing stuff to us on that. So, go forward with the, get that car and we'll get that in place. The, the patch, the new patch design.
All right, so this kind, this picture's kind of a little stretched out. But as I get to look in here, and this is not now, we don't wanna do this now, but going into next year, we're gonna get some quotes and see how much it would cost to make a new shoulder fat? Because I thought, well, your police department needs to represent your city? And right now, we represent the state of Georgia? As you kind of see it? So I just took it upon myself to get this designed here, and I thought it looked reminiscent of your Yawarl tree.
I think you did a lovely job. I like it very much.
Just to have a little flair added to it, I think we should be proud of where we are, who we are. You know, like when everyone asks me, when I, my favorite scene is when I told everyone where I was going to work, they're like, Oxford, why? And I was like, why not? So why not? Let's, let's make it a little more appealing. The patch don't necessarily make the officer, I sure know the patch don't make the officer, but it does make you a little bit prouder to wear that. And I'm saying, it's kind of your recruiting tool, because if you see all these, oh, man, that's a cool patch. And I got thousands of them.
Well, this will blend in with your black uniform as much.
I think so. Black and gold, we're Tree City. So, it's gonna look good. That's going forward in the next year's budget. But I just wanna get the approval to go forward.
Everybody get with it?
Go with it.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great, great. I'm almost scared with this next one. This is your first look at the budget? The, the capital budget is really just roll forward everything that was in last year's. We didn't really do much of what was in there. And so, so that's why it looks the way it is. But I think we will wanna make some amendments to that, because there are a lot of other things that we need to do.
The capital budget does have some money added for the new software system.
It does have that, okay, yeah. Well, yeah, so just real quick on that, because we, I don't know, we haven't, we talked about this a while ago, and I haven't really talked about it lately, is, you know, we've got this antiquated system. I mean, I think that it runs our accounting and our billing and our work order process, all that stuff's kind of wrapped into one package. And so, Marcia and Stacy have been looking at a new system that we can transition to, that will bring us up to a capability, having the capabilities to do what we wanna do? In terms of like better serving our customers, our utility customers? And being able to more automated issuance of work orders? Just a bunch of different stuff. Anyway, bring us into, I like to say, bring us into the twenty-first century? Because the system we got is pretty old, man.
Flintstones to the Jetsons. Flintstones to the Jetsons, that's what we're calling it.
You're referring to what's in the capital budget? So that was added to the capital budget as an exception? Because it's a, it's a chunk of change to divide the system out.
How much?
Ninety-nine thousand? It's repeated three different times in three different sections.
That's cause, that's cause we're gonna probably divide it between several accounts? Probably between electric, water, sewer bills coming to talk about it.
Well, the reason we did it that way is partly what we need to kind of discuss. I mean, a lot of the budget, I just simply left it as Matt had had it, because I didn't feel I had the knowledge? Knowing what the council's, you know, interest is in moving funds around. There seem to be like funds coming from the general, or the electric fund that go to general that didn't really make sense to me, or the things like that. But the hundred thousand dollars is a good example that, I think in the past, it just would have simply said a hundred thousand dollars from capital funds going to buy this. But you really should spread that out between revenue coming from your general fund, which is taxes and things like that. So it has a reason you're using that software to pay employees and all that. So the general fund is obviously putting a, which, you know, a load of work on this software? But then so is the electric fund, and so is water and sewer, you know, with all your billing and things like that. So typically, what you would do is spread out that cost of a hundred thousand among the three different revenue sources that you have. You may do that very precisely, or you may just simply divide it by three, which is what we did. Because I mean, that's about, that's probably about right, it's just kind of eyeballing. And so, that's an example, I think, of in the past, we would just, and I think Ms. Brooks had brought up the fact that in the past, there just was a lot of projects in there that were loaded, but it wasn't clear where the revenue was coming from in the capital budget. So, you know, we'd be kind of isolate that better to, you know, to look at that issue.
Some of the capital budget runs according to our five-year plan and our short-term plan. And those items that are in the back of the capital budget are the definition of where the money is supposed, is coming from and going to.
Right, yeah, some of them do.
But in some cases, it's, it's, it's very broad, it's like city funds. It doesn't say that this is coming out of a specific. Well, I agree with some of that generic order. Yeah, but yeah, right, it gets into more specificity. This is city funds versus spa funds or versus other, which might be grant, not the funding.
Mr. Mayor, I'm assuming if this is a capital project, it would come out of capital fund?
You can transfer.
That's a transfer to the capital fund. And the fact is that the water, sewer, the electric, funds the general fund anyway. And we're gonna give it in one hand, take it right back out the other. Because if we charge it to the general fund, then one of our capital projects will fit in anyway.
What we were, and I, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, right? But what we were doing is essentially that, we were transferring anything that was a capital expense, we were essentially transferring to the capital fund and then paying. Instead, when we talked with our auditor, we basically said, it would be better if it's a, if it's a general government-related capital expense, like buying new computers? Then, or buying a, you know, city manager car? That should be paid for out of the general fund as a capital expense.
But the money will go come out of, it's safe.
Well, it shouldn't be that. It's gonna come out of the general fund. Now, how, it's gonna, it's gonna come out of the general fund. Where did the revenue come from that will pay for that? If it's not sufficiently being paid for by lost and all that, right? It may be that it came from an inter, inter, a cash transfer. But the point is that still, it was a general government expense, not a capital, I mean, it was a general government capital expense. So that, just the idea of making sure that you're tracking, was it a capital expense for your electric department? Or was it a capital expense for your police department? Or capital expense for your administrative department? And we weren't really delineating that in the past, and we're trying to transition it more specifically. Right?
Yes, ma'am, that's right.
Yeah, did you have a question?
What are you looking for us tonight on this capital budget thing?
Well, let me say, I mean, one, you know, we have a calendar coming up, and we're supposed to be presenting a draft budget on May second. So it may be that, rather than trying to hash through everything this evening, I mean, we just try to plan a work session to go through the capital budget alone? Or if you wanna try to tackle both budgets, we can do that. But we could certainly hit on some highlights tonight. I mean, what are we all gonna do? But I just think in the interest of efficiency with time and, and.
It matters not to me, I'm just asking, what, what am I supposed to be looking at?
I, I would suggest that we set a time for a special session on the capital budget. The, the operating budget, I mean, we can obviously argue nits and nats on that, but a lot of that is determined by.
What is?
It has been over the last whatever. And you, you make some assumptions about, is it gonna get more expensive, less expensive? We're getting more revenue, less revenue.
So I had a couple of flags on the operation.
Yeah, now please do raise those, and, and if you want to raise it now, we can make note of it.
Well, I mean, if it's the appropriate time, I had a question about on the, on the spreadsheet, line one thirty-four? If we can go there.
I don't have those numbers. What part of the budget is it?
Okay, well, it talked about street repairs, and it had ten thousand dollars in the budget. And having just looked at.
Well, those wouldn't be capital repairs, those are just patching potholes.
Right, but I guess it was in the operational section of the budget.
Which section of the budget is it in?
Well, right, you have, you're just doing regular repairs during the year, that's just an operational cost.
Couple filling pothole kinds of things. Okay, cool, that's great.
Oh, yeah, is it this one? Street repair at the bottom, yes.
Yeah.
Well, what was odd about that, I think, is that in the past, the street budget had no money for street repairs.
Okay, so that's just your everyday pothole kind of thing? Cool, that was my question. The next one I had was in the water department, line one sixty-nine and one eighty-six. They both had really large increase, increases, I just wondered why.
What are the items?
The water department first off.
Yeah, it was in water, and it was line one sixty-nine.
Do you remember what the expense is?
No, I didn't write details, because I'm just referencing the line numbers. So, and it was the, you know, it was this one. It was the spreadsheet number, it's not this number.
Gotcha.
So it was the master column, or master row.
You don't remember what it?
I have a PDF pulled up, that's why I can't see it.
Yeah, all right, well, so we'll address it later.
The sewer treatment fees, maybe, or?
No, 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 it wasn't something like that, because I know those just.
Maybe this one here?
Maybe it was, maybe it had to do with, yeah, the increase in the regular employees, and then we also had dramatic increase in extra help. And I thought if we're increasing, you know, if we're having additional employee fees or, you know, pay here? Then do we still need such a dramatic increase in the contract holders? I don't know, it just seemed like an inconsistent couple large increases, and they both seemed like relatively redundant jobs. You know, if we're bumping one way up, why are we bumping both way up?
Are you talking about contract labor?
I think so, I think that it was.
Because that includes a lot more than just temporary employees. That includes like HCS services and all the people we pay for contracts.
Sure, it was just a dramatic increase from years past. And so was the, yeah, so it was.
Well, say on the regular employee side, Jody's team was down two people quite a bit of last year.
Oh, right, so I'm expecting to see an increase in, you know, in.
Those of the past have been two different items. You got the temporary help, and then you got the contract labor. Children, baby, we put up clothes, and we have, we do contract out with somebody to put up clothes, you know, right? That, so that's kind of a different type of employees, not employees, we temporary kind of guys.
It's like, was it over and under to come help us out with the power on there or something? That's a contract.
That's an electric side.
On the electric.
Right, but in, but in the water, it was, that's okay, I, I need to have it in front of me, because I was just reading through and making marks, and so I, I need to.
Yeah, the contract labor, this year, we've spent twenty-six thousand five hundred, pretty much. And we're on target, if we continue at that, the rate for this year, we would spend thirty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-nine. So, and then we just increase prices. So that's why we put the number thirty, is just to really be, you know, like I said, we've spent twenty-six over this year.
Sure, 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 sure. And actually, I thought it was, you know, I just gotta look at it again, because I thought it was a more dramatic increase than that. It seemed disproportionate to sort of the trend. I mean, I understand the increase of year to year prices, but.
So you know how like with that PDF, you can highlight and put a sticky on? I'm just saying, have like one way to communicate, sort of sticky up, mark up?
Yeah.
The PDF and send it back. But otherwise, if you just wanna mark up a hard copy and bring it back, you can give it to Bill?
Yeah.
So that he has that, and he can look at those specific items.
Yeah, I was just kind of wondering.
Because there's definitely, you know, there's, there's some art and some science. I mean, there, some of it is knowing the backstory about why a number was down one year, one year.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we also did some reallocations of labor over the last couple of years. We tried to adjust our allocations of people. Mike, do you have?
Yeah, I have a fun fact.
Okay.
I want you to look at the.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, good. What do you see? What's missing? We're not paying you. I don't, why, yeah, it's interesting, I don't know. I think that's just, we do need to, and in fact, I did notice that was one of the, the labor for the council, it's just, it's the same, there's thirty-eight or something like that. So, yeah.
I was, I was referring to page three of twenty-two.
We left out Mike, Mike's four thousand, or start.
What do you get?
My start, my, yeah. My start, four hundred, yeah.
That's cause it was copied from, it was copied directly from Matt's, from last year.
I changed the.
It didn't have A's in there.
It doesn't have A's.
I changed the math from what you sent the other day, so you should have the right.
This was that little side, there's a little side table that's sort of the summary of what everybody's stipends, what it is.
If you didn't, we have to get a hard copy of it.
Yeah.
And then also, my last question about the operational budget was, we end up negative one hundred and seventy K?
We can, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, right now, I haven't messed with all the plugs. Like, for instance, the general fund is in excess of seventy-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. But that's without the, Matt was putting a plug of a hundred thousand from, you know, previous funds that hadn't been spent on the assigned fund balance. But then, you know, right now, like, you have seventy-eight thousand excess in general fund, but you're also transferring from the electric fund three hundred and forty thousand dollars? While the electric fund is down by a hundred and sixty-nine thousand in the red. So, we can obviously play with those plugs. But, you know, it doesn't look as though the general fund needs to be transferring as much as been shown in the past for the general fund's needs. But I would argue that, I mean, the city needs to start getting into a process of, you know, like if I'm an employee here in administration, but twenty percent of my time is thinking of electric fund issues? And twenty percent of my pay could come from the general fund? But just arbitrarily assigning X number of dollars to the general fund out of the electric fund is not healthy long-term? I mean, because you're artificially, I mean, if we have a problem with the general fund not supporting itself, we need to look at the spending in the general fund first and figure out what's going on, I guess.
I think, going back probably when he started, there was always a blank amount that was expected to have to come out of the utility funds to cover. And I don't think that number has changed much over the years. I think it was like four hundred that we just saw the blanket they put in every year or whatever. But I, you know, to those point, that's one thing I want us to do is, is to have, is to truly understand, what is our general fund expenditures? And then what's versus the revenue we got? And you look at, well, is it, is there some increase of revenue that we need? Not just looking to the other funds to carry that? And then look at the actual, because what happens is, you end up, for example, passing on that cost, that's a tax you're putting on the consumer, consumers of the utility. And maybe it's a better, it's better for that expense to be more on the property owner. You know, and they aren't necessarily the same person in some cases. So it's kind of really understanding the, you know.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with him, I'm not here.
Yeah, but no, you're right, it's just, I think it was just this wedge every year that got flipped in there, we walk out. And when you talk about that, I know you wanna move on, but one of the others I noticed, the loss, you're projecting less? Even though we are doing more, you're projecting, you're asking for thirty thousand dollars less than more assumed to get this year? Why are we going down? I can tell you what I think is, is, you know, we saw, I think, an unprecedented increase in loss in park, because people were not going into work. They were staying within the community, spending their dollars here. And so, you had more just local expenditure. And so, it's probably as we get more back into a normal economic swing of things? It might be less local dollars on a day-to-day basis, so. So, thinking ahead, I might pump up for calendar twenty-three. People who are.
So, thinking ahead, calendar twenty-three, people who are at the town center are going to have an impact on our loss, so you don't think that's gonna wash it out?
Well, the other uncertainty is, we've certainly expressed to everybody involved that we wanna keep our three percent, but Covington has expressed they want more of the pie, so, you know, we are continuing to assert ourselves, but there's still unknown what's gonna, how things are gonna fall out, and we're gonna have to drive the county, because the county has historically been the latter, as you all remember from the service delivery strategy, so we, the cities have been trying to drag the county into moving forward, and they're too busy with other stuff.
I mean, mathematically, if you simply look at population, we could be cut in terms of the slice of the pie by fifty percent.
Yeah.
Now, I don't know what that does to the dollars, because spending is changing so much, but if you look at the math on our.
That's, that was something that we brought up as a council.
Yeah, that, that, financial sustainability plan in Georgia, and others were part of the committee, and looking at that, and decided it was gonna probably be flat, because the number, the percentage would go down while the number went up.
Well, that was one reason I lowered the number a little bit, it's just uncertainty with that.
I'm not against us being realistic, but, you know, the two of you have been talking about it, and this is our first one.
Yeah, no, that was very good question, why did we not think it was gonna keep going forward, and it's just trying to pull back the reins a little bit, and be a little bit conservative about what it will be next year, without, without knowing, because that negotiation is ongoing right now, we also have, you know, we'll be voting on new SPOLOST in the fall, in November.
Well, we have to have our numbers, please, well, that's, we're going on that SPOLOST.
The previous county administrator met with the cities, I think the second week I was working here, and he handed us all a sheet on what the county was offering at the time, and that was three point oh two percent, and he also said that they would use that number for both lost and SPOLOST, is what they, so I reviewed all that with him to make sure I understood, because I was quite pleased that they were doing that, but then he's, he's left, and there's a new administrator, and my understanding from talking to the finance director at the county, is that in lieu of all this being handed out, I mean, now the county's hired a consulting firm to look at this issue, and I would suspect for the consulting firm to earn its pay, they're going to argue for us to get less, it's just my, my feeling, having seen this been done in other jurisdictions, so, we are having a meeting with the county, the new county manager, I think in the next couple of weeks, to just kind of talk about this and get to know each other.
Well, the other thing was, we, we voted to support, the cities could hire consultants, but us and Covington were the only, and Portale, I think, were the only ones that came back and did sign, and so they wasn't able to move forward as like an independent city thing, so, but, there's just been turmoil in the county, we're, we're trying to keep things moving with the cities, so, once again, even though we're small, we're driving a lot of this, make sure, because we have a lot to lose.
In the past, all the cities have been able to get together, put pressure on the county as a group, and I don't know if anybody is forming any, any goal or not, but.
Portale had sort of done so, but as the mayor said, it's kind of not gone anywhere recently, but what I, my understanding is, I don't recall the numbers, but I mean, Covington's going to be requesting considerably more money than what they have in the past. So, that would, that would come out of our share, if, you know, is the, is the concern.
All the answer structure that.
Yeah, we, there have been, there have been these meetings with, when Matt was here, and it was interesting, Matt was trying, was really helping keep that going and organizing, and he left in the, for the mayor, tried to step up, and I think Covington sort of stepped aside a little bit, and then decided what they needed, and then they, you know, so we're trying to, we're trying to make sure that everyone's re-engaged, and that we're all trying to get on the same page, so that we don't get, because what happened was, the, this chairman of the county had individual meetings with each city mayor, instead of us having a group meeting, which I viewed as a divide-and-conquer tactic, and so we'd made clear, well, we like what we're getting, the percentage was, we wanna move forward with that, but then it's.
He seemed appreciative of that.
Yeah, he did seem appreciative, but then, that may have been because he was hearing from everybody else, we want more, and I think everybody else does want more, and maybe that's because we were in a pretty good position.
In fact, if the company want more, it's gonna affect on us being more.
It could, it could, depends on where does the county wanna take it, you know, the county's not gonna wanna take less.
Yeah, I'm saying, well, getting that, yeah, I agree, but if the county's not gonna take less, that means everybody, all the, all the citizens are gonna get less, or whatever, but I was thinking, in a way, from what he was saying, is that if companies get more, we all are gonna get less, I, I, maybe I, maybe I, maybe I need to raise the bar.
Well, by the fact that, just looking at the census, we should be getting half, I have to speak logically, but.
I understand that, I understand that, well, I really understand that, but it's always possible to get more than probably.
And you can certainly do that, I mean, I would argue with eighty-one bringing in so much traffic, with the college being a center here, that's very important, that we need to support as a, as a county, and, I mean, there's, there's reasons why we should be sort of, if you will, punching above our weight, as a very important part of the community, but whether the county will.
I think the number, I think it's gonna come down to, the number they expect the SPOLOST to generate?
Or the lost.
Or the lost.
Whether they see that number's gonna trend, continue to trend away.
Well, the trends, if it shows us a trending up, then they can go back and say, well, you can get the same amount of money at a half percent less, and I think that's what we're gonna see happen with the consultants.
Yes, sir. So our goal is to stay very heavily engaged, and to make sure that we continue to make the case that we should be punching above our weight because of all those other factors, and so we'll keep y'all apprised, but we just don't wanna be overly optimistic about the revenue, or, I mean, we really got a windfall in lost, in lost this year, well, the last two years, like, in a hundred, like, over a hundred thousand dollars, which was great, and we just can't assume that that's gonna continue.
We're not the state of Georgia, we're gonna pass it all back out.
So, anyway, well, so please do, you know, if you've not yet, please do dive in, give us your individual, your comments about individual items you have a question on, we'll schedule a work session for the capital budget specifically, so we can, but, but be thinking about that too, and I've got more week we'll share with you, for you to think about when we think about the capital budget, when it comes to like all the things we have to run on, so, I want you to all have that in mind, yeah, Jim's got a smirk, so.
All of that having been said, I was gonna ask about the capital budget, but never mind, we've already put everybody to sleep.
Well, you know we ran everybody off, always thinks.
Well, I mean, also, I would encourage everyone to, I mean, if you'd like to come meet with me individually.
I'd wanna meet with you individually about the capital budget, I wanna talk about the capital budget as a group.
Sure, I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, I, I mean, it's getting late, and I'm being a pain in the butt, but there's some things on there that I find.
That's why I didn't make a lot of changes, because some of it just, a lot of it, frankly, I'm confused about.
I'm very uncomfortable with some of the things on the capital budget.
And, yeah, so we need, we need, it needs some intensive care, it needs to be.
When, when are we gonna do some special care?
As soon as we can find a way to prepare everybody for a work session, so maybe next Monday, that would work, or something like that, I don't know, we'll look and see if that works for them.
Does that make sense for everyone?
I apologize, that'd be fine, I have not looked at it, I'll be perfect, I have not looked at it.
I mean, I realize that, I'm just practically, this may be the first time y'all really.
And I was speed reading today, because I wanted to at least put on all.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, is that like, you've got it now.
Yeah.
Take a look at it, dive into it, we'll have a work session, we'll see if a week from now works, I'm not sure.
Frankly, if I may say so, and I will, that maybe we need to break this thing down and do it in, in stages, instead of trying to do it all at one time, because that's a lot of ground to cover for the folks of us that don't do it every day, and haven't been deeply involved, the way Mike has been deeply involved, and George has been deeply involved, and you and Bill, but the rest of us, we just kinda, you know, going, oh, what the heck, and, you know, and what does this mean, what does that mean, what does that mean, so, if we could break it down into, for those of us who are not deeply involved.
There's a lot of questions I have too.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's true.
I said, there's a lot of questions I have too.
But I appreciate Bill's offer to come see him, because frankly, I'm not a CPA, and accounting is not a strong suit, so it's nice for me to be able to, say, walk into, make a broken walk in and say, hey, walk me through this, so, I mean, at least, I mean, I, I see that offer as kind of like helping me see the redistribution, I know we have, we had some fuzzy accounting for a long time, and I know you're trying to tighten it up, and assign, you know, costs, or, you know, expenses and things.
I get that on all of it, but the capital budget.
Oh, sure.
Well, in the capital budget, part of what we wanna get past is it being this wish list that is, is not realistic, and that we look at some very, you know, very practical things that we have, that we gotta do, that are like in front of us, versus the things that we might like to do one day, and how do we move forward with those things, and so, yeah, we need to.
Make some.
Get some more precision in it, and more on practicality.
Well, also, we're required by law to balance the capital budget, just like we're required to balance the operating budget, and we haven't been trying to balance the capital budget.
Yeah, every year, we've been rolling quite a bit of money that was put in the capital fund, it's been rolled, just rolled into the bank, because it wasn't spent, and so it just accumulates in those accounts.
In a way, in order to balance it, as he says, is that what you have to do is project over a five, a five-year period, because you can't have six, seven million dollars just sitting in the bank, though, over ten years.
Right.
So you decide a five-year capital budget plan, you, you take that money, you run it across, you let it, and stretch it out, and you don't, maybe say after a second year, you decide to hang, we tell you to do this last year, we're not gonna do this, you, you re-appropriate, re-appropriate like that, that's kind of the way it's been going in the past, and in order to do what the gas gap and that's, to, to keep those regulations straight, you could just have one, one sign, like, just sit there.
Right, right.
It's got to be a law for a particular purpose.
Right.
That, that's true, yes, sir.
So we're working on getting our house in order with that as well, so, if y'all are okay, we'll, we'll move on to item eight, which is, you've seen email from Marcia, I don't know if there's any outstanding questions on that, but Marcia, maybe you can just give us a quick update.
And before I do that, I'd like to, let me look at the agenda, I'd like to defer nine and eleven to the next work session.
Okay.
In the interest of time.
Okay.
So, my request for realignment of positions in the city court's office, I've sent out, I sent out an email about a month ago, and then I also have included it in the information on the agenda, back in February, we lost our utility billing municipal court clerk, and this person had a tremendous amount of knowledge and experience, the person was in the position more than fifteen years, I tried to, and this person was classified as both the utility billing and municipal court clerk, I don't remember if I already said that, but this person was doing both jobs, and I consider those really to be two separate jobs, and I tried to fill the position the way it was, the way it's classified right now, I could not get any candidates who have the qualifications to perform well in both positions, so, basically, I'm requesting reassignment of the three clerk positions in the city clerk's office, I've provided you all the details, but I basically like to downgrade one position and upgrade another position, and make those, make three of my positions all associate clerks, there's really no impact on the budget, because the downgrade kind of washes out the upgrade, plus, the person who left us was about halfway up the scale, so, we're actually saving, even if we left that in that pay grade, we'd still be saving money just by filling that position at entry level, but that money will contribute to a savings on top of the washout, so, that's basically my request, I'll answer any questions if anybody has any.
Seem to be full of questions tonight.
Full of them.
Absolutely, I worked over it.
I'm sorry.
I fully agree with what you wanna do, I, I don't see that we should have an issue with that, but, having said that, you're gonna make three associates in that, than an entry level, that's gonna do some of the same work, why don't we just have three associates? Why, why do we have to designate one at a lower class?
I'm asking to make them all the same.
No, there won't be, there won't be an extra, like, administrative clerk, like we have at, that, now, there will be three associate clerks, the deputy clerk, Stacy, and the clerk.
Right.
Well, why she just explained it.
It may have been unclear, that, that, it's, we, she basically just saying, like, if you think about the people, right, that Dawn's physician, she was doing two jobs, we're gonna split those into two, but then, because you're getting somebody that has the experience above.
You know, we have three, if you split one, we mean.
You're splitting the responsibilities, but still just keeping the one person, and in doing so, downgrading that position she held to a step below, or grade below.
A grade below is in the associate spot, is different than a below slot.
So now, and then, well, then the, the one that's currently held as an administrative clerk is stepping up to an associate clerk, so now you have three associate clerks.
But didn't she have three people to start with, and then split one, make it four?
Not splitting the person, splitting the responsibilities of that position into.
Because I have one vacancy. I have one vacancy.
Yeah, so not really splitting, not splitting it into two different positions, we're not splitting, not taking a job that was done by one person and making two people.
I just, yeah, the way it sounds.
It was decoupling the, the responsibilities from that one position, because finding someone who had both.
Yeah.
Yeah. Fully understand that.
So, so, no additional positions, just gonna have now three associate clerks in the office, and deputy clerk and clerk. Because they all, they, they really listen, that they all get up and, and take care of people, right, they all, they all kind of take care of managing things, and then they've got their own individual tasks, whether it be getting ready for court, getting ready for billing, you know, et cetera.
Actually, I really, I, I have no problem with George trying to do what we're trying to do, but getting there is gonna be a, to me, it's gonna be a monster trying to get there, because when I look at the, out of the job description that we have for a court clerk, and even I think in the job, I was checking job description that you put out for that, seemed like they said they had to go to school, they had to get, get, I think it's called clerk, or clerkship, and so in other words, we're gonna have a situation here where we're gonna have one position seem like is just a little above the other two positions, seem like it's gonna be hard to get this, and I'm not an expert on all the factors that you use to do all this, but as far as how much weight each one carries, I, I didn't get that far into this in my previous life, but, I do know that they have to be equal, if we're gonna pay them the same, we're gonna classify these jobs as the same pay scale, the same thing, we talked about getting universal George, that somebody come back in and do for us, I'm afraid that this might come back, to we might have to make some serious changes if we don't do this right, and that's the only thing I'm concerned, and I find it trying to look at it, I find it very hard trying to get these, these three positions to all equal, I'm not saying it can't be done, but I haven't been able to do it yet, and hopefully you can do it, but I'm not, I'm not saying that it can't be done, but I'm having a hard time looking at the requirements in that court clerk job, it's kind of, really kind of sets itself away from the other two positions.
Yeah, and that's of state law, we, you know, as a state.
All the certain things have to happen, the same amount of supervision, the same amount of responsibility, that's not right there in these other two positions.
Is, is it any hope of us see, getting a copy of the old job description?
It's, it's in your package.
Well, I did, I missed that on my package, I'm sorry, how about the new job description? I saw that letter.
It's in there.
It's in that, that's the complete description, and all, these, these people are gonna have to go to school to be court clerk, right?
Yes, sir.
Or the other two gonna have to go to school for any certifications? Or the other two going to have to go to school for any certifications?
No.
I think that speaks to what Georgia said.
We're going to wear our billing system, but that, so there's training, but there's not a cert, like a state certification.
Well, I think that speaks directly to what Georgia said.
Oh, yeah, 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 makes a challenge.
And that's, that's the only thing I'm saying, it's a challenge to do, because, I mean, we tried, a couple of years ago, Matt and I, when we tried to come up with a job description that we did that included both of these, and we, and we moved it up on another level because of the fact that it requires a lot more duty and responsibilities than just a building clerk. And so we moved that job up, and we were trying to get some progression in the office where you come in at one level, and you move up to this level, you can move up to another level, but it's kind of hard with such a small office, you don't really get that.
Nobody, it leaves.
But it is a problem, as close as those people in that office work, and they all have to do a good job, give or take, as close as they work in that office. It is kind of a problem with one making this and one at this level and another this level, because it's so much if you do the same.
Yeah.
If you're not here today, I already do your job, and it's still a same amount of clerk, court clerk work has to be done by an experienced person, know what they're doing. And that's the only thing that bothers me is that I just hope we get it right.
Well, I'm not opposed, my, my priority is getting people in those jobs, getting our vacancy filled, and I'm not opposed to the court clerk being on a higher pay grade, if that's what it takes.
But then that defeats our thing about trying to get everybody in the same pay rate, so the island monster, whatever we have going on, would happen.
Yeah.
Now, I, I, I believe we might can do it in a way where, the fact that, the only part I think bothers me that when you start having to qualify, you go to school, you've got to feel at another level than somebody else, that normally brings that job just a little higher than the other job. If it wasn't for that part of it, then I, I can see how we could do these, in, in the situation where we could have, just because you're doing billing for the court, it might be different billing for the warrant, or if there's nothing, it's just, you know, the same type of routine, but it's a little different, it's a little more strong responsibility that you have, I think, for what I read in the description of the court clerk, because you're looking at fines, you're looking at warrants, you're looking at a lot of different things, you, you're kind of in a position where you can kind of affect somebody's driving license or somebody's bond, you know?
Yes, yes.
So you're doing a little something a little different from me doing the clerk of work, and the next thing I was thinking about, we, we were talking about moving to a billing where we're going to outsource our billing.
Yes.
Now, that's going to take away some more billing from somebody else again, so we have to keep all of that in mind, so we got something here, it's going to take a little time to get together.
It would reduce, outsourcing would reduce the duties of the.
Right, that would reduce the building clerk's duty.
Yes.
But we're hoping, since what we're really just doing, it's a mechanistic aspect of their job, that it frees them up to do some of the other stuff that we need bandwidth to do, but that, all that, that all points, right? One thing I was thinking about Georgia is, does it make sense to cross-train all three of them or cross-certify them so that they've all got the same certification because if one's out and somebody's got to be the court clerk, you want them to have the same
That's a good point.
qualifications to step in and that.
I'm, if Stacy wants to, she's been here a lot longer than I have.
Well, I would suggest having a deputy court clerk in the event your court clerk is not available, or gets sick or can't be in court. I, for a long time, served as a deputy court clerk during Ms. Lawrence's tenure, when she was actually the court clerk, but it would definitely benefit us to have a deputy court clerk.
But it could, could you serve that basic function, like, if you just made sure that at least two of the people are both cross-trained and certified to serve as the court clerk, one person, that's their job, their day job, and then if they're out for whatever reason, the other person steps in, you don't necessarily have to call them deputy court clerk, but you could say, because they're both associate clerks, but one serves as the clerk of the court, and the other person can step in and service the court of the court when need be. Does that make sense? It's not without getting too caught up on the fact we're going to call you court clerk and you deputy court clerk, you're both trained to be court clerk if need be, but this is your job day to day.
Correct. As long as they both maintain the same level of
Yeah, keep, got to keep.
training and certification.
Trained, so, yeah.
Right. I think, I think we just, we got three people in the office, right? Why do we have all trained to be court clerk as well? In other words, it's just they all have the same thing, is that they all should be able to rotate around a bit of clerk clerk position. I might do it this week, we might be on vacation, so there's my week, I'm going to do it the next week, the other family can also do it. I don't know, I'm just trying to figure.
It seems to me that'd be the only way to make it, make everybody on the same level.
Yeah.
I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah.
I mean, if there's so much need to kind of do some load sharing, like, even given day to day, it might make that much more versatile.
You've got to cross-train them.
And make it work, yeah, but they're all cross-trained.
Without that, I just don't see the point in having them all on the same level, it just seems counterproductive to me.
The only thing that I would ask as far as running the driver's histories, I don't know the level of how many people we can actually have running the driver's history.
Yes.
I think.
I agree, I agree with that. We do have to limit that.
But is that more of a, I mean, it, that in itself, it's kind of, you run them through the system, I mean, I, I guess I'm just trying to.
It's very restricted because you have to be in a secured room.
Yeah.
Well, you also, there's more training you have to go through.
Gotcha.
Talking about access to information.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's what I was talking about in the beginning, so much, it's a lot of difference in that particular position
Yeah.
than in the other positions in the office, but that's the only problem, you know? I'm not just trying to do it, I'm just trying to do, that's going to make sure if we do it, we do it right, so we won't have to come back and
Right.
That's all.
It kind of worries me having that many people manage the level of records at one time. We definitely need a backup, but if we have too many hands in the pot, it may cause problems.
So definitely, if we did that, we'd need to make sure that there's enough document controls, for example, file controls, and we know whose hand was on something.
Correct, because you're.
There's, there is an audit trail in the software that tells you everything that, that is done in there.
The chief wanted to.
Yeah, just to reiterate what Stacy was saying, is you want to have, try to limit that to one hand. Now, as far as the, the driver's license, it has changed, we've less restricted, but that's, that's going to be a DC three thing where you come in every morning, you log into your computer, that's my login. Right now, they recommend we never shut them down, it's, it's kind of odd to me, but if you do have the access to the DCIC and that's your terminal, that you've been granted the access to, that you run that driver's history, you're the only one that can run it on your terminal, and if something goes awry, then they know where it came from. But we do need to make sure that you do have a backup, because it is, like you said, the fines, the fees, and even the warrants, we're running into a problem with some warrants for this thing we have going around now, we've got enough discussion, but if somebody's lively, but you're going to throw somebody in jail for a hundred and twenty-five dollar stop sign ticket, and they sitting in jail for two months and they can't make a buck, that's, it has to be right. It has to be absolutely right. You do got to have a backup because if God forbid something happens, they have a car wreck, and they can't get it.
Especially COVID.
In, in the past, I was definitely clicking, I was clutching trying to get a backup, right?
Right now, and, and actually, I am the court clerk according to the charter, so I have basically, from this point forward, I'm acting as the chief clerk, and whoever gets designated as the court clerk is under my supervision, and I'm the only one that can run driver's histories right now. And we may keep it that way because it takes maybe five or ten minutes to run the driver's histories for court, so it's not like a burden for me or anything.
Well, let's move forward, but move forward smartly and take a look and see whether, and y'all think a little bit more about it. I mean, I, I think we all favor, if we can make it work, to, to cross cert, you know, cross-train and, and have people be able to recognize the need for controls. It sounds like the system will, or if our current system, maybe the future, the two B system allows to have the controls that we need to, to keep things under control. We just want to make sure that we, I, we like the idea of there being harmony and parity in the office, and yet we recognize that that role has certain certification requirements, so.
Well, what, what is your timeline on how you're going to?
Because you need to get that someone hired in that position, they said. You've got, you've got a candidate who's qualified for the billing clerk.
Yes, and a current employee has already been certified as a court clerk and is doing the job right now, so I would like to move her into that position.
So maybe part of it is, just, you know, pragmatically, is some of the paper, getting some of the paperwork and all that sorted out will take more time than getting things in place that essentially are what she's asking to do.
Actually, I think I would probably go ahead and proceed the way you're talking about as far as kind of billing clerk.
Yeah.
And go ahead, the person that you said have already trained to do the court clerk, and we decide whether we're going to pay that person anymore enough, in other words, we go ahead and proceed the way we're going, we'll figure out a way to make it work.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need a vote on this, or?
My view was this was more of an administrative thing, but we wanted to make sure that we talked it out, I don't know.
To it, I, I had looked at that.
I mean, we're going to pass a change like the personnel.
No, no, without saying, yeah, I, I'm not.
And classification.
Personnel manual, but actually, to me, this is, I could create a total new position at the way we were trying to do it. That was going to be a total new position because we were creating this position that didn't exist.
Gotcha. Well, and wait a minute, we're, we're just calling everybody associate clerk?
Yeah, but you can call me.
Is the position?
You can call me at all if you want to.
No, but I'm saying, is the, is the new position? I guess it's a question like.
I mean, I can say that to you.
No. An associate clerk is the position, right? The job duty is court clerk, the certification is court clerk, we're creating, we're, I, I, what I didn't, I don't think we're creating, we just happen to have the same job, job duties in one associate clerk.
Yeah, but see, we already have.
We're not creating.
We already have a file of associate clerk and what their duties are. We have a file of court clerk, you have the job description, what they are. So we already have this on file, these job descriptions of what their duties are.
But right now, you're a utility billing clerk also, and that's the part.
So now we're going to create different duties, so that changes your job description.
Gotcha.
So that's the new job script. That's not the alternative to that.
Yeah, yeah.
So are we saying we need a vote?
The only thing that I have a problem with, and I've always had a problem with, is giving somebody a job to do and then deciding later whether you're going to pay them to do that job or not. That's just not right. If we, if the court clerk, or whatever the, you call it, is on the high level, and somebody's moved in there to do it, and they're doing it adequately, they should be paid for it.
No, I agree with you, and we, I mean, just.
And if we got somebody already in there doing it, they should be being paid for it, not deciding six months from now if they should get it.
Without, without crossing over into personnel specifics, but, you know, we have, have an individual who we were making sure that they were going to be able to be effective in this role, and they have proven to the task, and, and I'd say therefore, let's move them forward with that, you know, position change, but we didn't rush into that because we want to make sure they were up for the job.
Well, in the past, people have done a job up to a year
Yeah, no, we don't want to do that.
without being paid for it, and I object to that.
Not absolutely, yeah. So we, we can, we can do, we can do a formal vote in the, in the next meeting to, to go ahead and create this new position, this new associate clerk position that will be, well, actually, it's kind of a merge, it's taking, it's creating, like you said, we had associate clerk, we had a billing clerk, and we had a court clerk, because those are job, separate job descriptions.
So we came up with a new job description a couple of years ago, that was a billing clerk slash court clerk.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And we're going to.
Actually, they're listed on my memo, that what we currently have at the top of the memo. And I can bring it up on, on here.
Well, while you're doing that, the other thing that came out of this conversation that we've talked about before is looking at the charter.
Yeah.
And getting that reorganized the way it should be. Are we, are we moving forward on that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, maybe not as fast as you and I would like, but we are.
And the personnel manual.
Yeah.
We're still, I forgot your comment.
That's an ongoing thing.
As it should be. It's a living document. So right now, we have city clerk, deputy city clerk, utility billing clerk, slash municipal court clerk, that's the one that's vacant, that I, that I am having trouble filling. We have an associate clerk, and we have an administrative clerk. The administrative clerk is who is performing the duties of the municipal court clerk at this time. So I'd like to.
Change the administrative clerk to an associate clerk.
Yes.
And then transfer the responsibilities by utility billing clerk slash municipal court clerk, split those between the two associate clerks.
Or higher. Well, not that, the, the gen four associate clerk
Oh, sorry, the gen four associate clerk, yeah.
is kind of out of the discussion right now, she's, she's already an associate clerk.
Gotcha.
But I'd like to make the utility billing clerk, the gen three, I'd like to make that an associate clerk and change it to just a billing clerk.
And she'd be the new addition.
Yes, and I have someone who has, she had about five years billing, utility billing with Newton County Water and Sewer.
Well, why do you particularly want her to be a associate clerk instead of a utility billing clerk? I mean, I'm just asking.
Well, she'll just be, just be a billing clerk, but I suggest, sorry, didn't mean to sound like it is. And splitting the court clerk and the billing clerk.
I get that, but why, why change the name to associate clerk? I mean, is there some significance in that?
It's a different page, right?
Now, since we're going to outsource the billing.
We're not outsourcing the billing, we're outsourcing the processes and other bills, right?
Right.
The only thing is, we still calculate the bills, the billing, sorry, the utility bills, it's the printing and distributing of those bills that we're talking about.
Okay, I guess I read that.
Yeah, no, no, it's just.
But that's a, but that's a huge, that's a huge burden, that takes.
Yeah, it takes a lot of time for our people to basically get those ready to bail out and all that, this, we're going to outsource that, not the, they've still done the.
I thought they were going to print the bills.
They're going to print them, but the calculation of the bills.
Electronic.
The, the bills will be prepared electronically, transmitted to the outsourced. They, also, all they're really doing is, is printing and stuffing the envelopes and sending them out the door.
Well, that's what billing is.
Billing is calculating how much your bill is.
Billing is opening new accounts, finalizing accounts, doing monthly calculations, Stacy.
Well, how, how long does it take to run the, the paper through that machine? And can we buy a machine that'll put it, stuff them in the envelopes as well? I mean, just how long, how many hours a month are we talking about?
I want to defer that conversation to the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, we want to talk about it more later. Okay, so, so we're going to, the point is, we're all okay with moving forward with hiring the person to put them into the, into the billing clerk role, and we'll vote to approve the creation of the new associate clerk position and to upgrade the administrative clerk position to an associate clerk position. And the reassignment of the responsibilities to the new associate clerk position and the upgraded administrative to associate position.
Jim, to answer your question why I wanted to make it an associate clerk is because I want all three positions on the same pay grade, and associate clerk is the pay grade that I want them on.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, fun stuff. I, I really hope we don't have to spend too much time on this proposed July fourth, for it to be figured out. Okay. So one of the things I hope we can all agree on is that we are accepting the chief's recommendation and the committee's recommendation that we're going to stay off of eighty-one this year. If we agree on that, that helps us because our, we have to tell GDOT that we're going to close eighty-one, or ask them if we can close to eighty-one like yesterday. So if we can at least agree on that, then we can start talking about.
That's all it is.
Which way we're going.
Yeah, there's no threat in it, if the council agrees to change the route.
Yeah, so I mean, I, there's nobody having any issue with staying off eighty-one.
I think it's a smart move, yeah.
So I'd send out just saying, you know, I mean, like, the last, the route that we have been running lately, which was a shorter route than the one before that, is still a two-point-five mile route, and so the routes that were being kind of pitched. And so the routes that were being kind of pitched around are more around the one to one-and-a-half mile route. And so it's just, to me, it's kind of a question of making sure that we're, we're thinking about where are the best grandstands, if you will, like based on our streets, like where, where people can easily congregate and see the parade well. But also being sensitive to people who feel like if you suddenly stop going down Buckstone and Bonnell and all that, those people are gonna go, what the hell happened? Because I know that we all probably have all already heard from the people in Oxford Square that remember it used to go through Oxford Square, and they feel kind of like we dissed them. So that's the sensitivity I had, but otherwise, I think we're, we're really talking about the same roads. It's maybe just.
I think the chief and I, we talked earlier, and I think we pretty well resolved that problem that to be discussed at the next meeting, don't you think?
Okay, okay. So just wanna make sure that we, if we needed to move forward, block, would ask permission to close eighty-one. Otherwise, we can, so we can move on.
If you want me to quickly tell you, then I'd be glad to do it. If you'd rather not, that's fine with me.
I, I think that was just the main thing, was time.
Let's move on, I'm ready to go on too.
Okay, so the next item, and we don't have to get into a long belaborate conversation. And frankly, I, we, I want Bill, I were gonna send you, it's not Bill, we didn't have a chance. We were like working in real time, I don't know that you had a chance to send to them the document that we were working on. But I, I would just, so in a way, kind of, could kind of, we'll hand it out to you. Archiver, I want you to kind of, I want, I want you all to read and digest this and let it soak in. The takeaway is, we got a lot going on. We've got a lot going on that requires sophistication, a technical capability, and a certain amount of dexterity and, and, the point is. If I thought we could hire one extra person and get all this stuff done that we gotta get done, I'd, I'd recommend that. But we can't because it's, it's like, one hand, we need somebody who has this, another hand, we need somebody that can do that. And so, given all that we have going on, and just to hit the highlights, this whole Project Jane stuff, which is the industrial development on Williams Road, it self-triggers. We've gotta verify our water and sewer capacity, determine whether we gotta upgrade the line on Soul Street from a six-inch line to an eight or ten-inch line or, but either way, I think we gotta replace a new, put a new six-inch line as a minimum in there. We've gotta verify that, we've gotta verify the sewer capacity. Though, all those things require engineering expertise and designing the project. We've also gotta design or to develop the engineering for the connection to the site from our infrastructure to the site and coordinate with the, the site developer contractor, et cetera. We are having a preliminary meeting with them soon, next week, this week, anyway. So, so there's things with that. There's also the road, which before we had a, a meeting with the county and the mayor of Covington and, and others, they were forgetting about the fact that there's a high probability that people are gonna be coming from Project Jane site up to eighty-one on our section of East Soul slash Williams Road. And that if they took, if a truck, an eighteen-wheeler or a big duck truck or whatever that's, that's in construction time or in operations, will destroy the culvert that the creek runs under and that the road bed is also not rated for. So we've gotta do full-depth reclamation of our section of the road to eighty-one, and we've gotta replace that culvert. And we gotta make sure that we are, you know, not getting screwed to, sorry, pardon my, remind you that, that we are, we wanna make sure that there's equity in terms of what's being asked of us and how much we're having to pay and that there's gonna be state funds for this state economic development project that we can get an allocation of that to help defer the, defer some of the costs. Because it, it's not gonna be cheap to do full-depth reclamation of a lot of core of road. So there's that, you know, so that takes, engineering takes, product management takes active engagement with all the parties involved. And that's just because somebody else has a project that, that impacts us.
It's set at the toll booth.
To pay it for. Then there's, then there's the more ambitious or aspirational stuff that has to do with, we want to win the bid to provide electric, electric utility service to this site. To do that, we have to have, to be, have our game face on, have our ducks in a row and be able to present a winning proposal. And we're working with MEAG, but right now, we are solely at the kind of mercy of MEAG and E S, Eastern electricity of Georgia to, to represent us in this process. They also work with Covington, and who's gonna be bidding on this as well. I'm not saying they have conflict, they're gonna have separate teams working on it. But I'm, I am saying that I feel like we need to have our own experts who are working with us to make sure that we are, we are negotiating in our best interest. Because this could be, if you think about the fact that we have a four billion, a four-megawatt peak capacity right now, and we generate about two and a half million dollars a year in revenue from that. If we are doing an additional nine megawatts by two years from now and then an additional ten more by twenty thirty, so, twenty, no, twenty thirty, there're gonna be nineteen additional that we have now. Figure out, that's millions of dollars of revenue more that we would be getting. And so we want, we gotta put our best foot forward and be, you know, be golden on that, so.
Well, excuse me, but I guess what is your suggestion when trying to get somebody to represent us in this rather than in Oxford, Georgia?
Oops, I'm sorry.
What is your ideal position if there's somebody else to?
So, what we are, what, what Bill and I would recommend, we've done, what I will say, we've done market analysis. But Bill and I know there are, there are several large sort of design, engineering consultancies that you can go out and hire that can do this kind of stuff for you. And so really, and their rates are all essentially the same because they're all based on like, you know, how senior the person is, et cetera. So a lot of that is about cultural fit and relationships and being, have somebody you feel like you can work well with. We've identified a consultancy we think we can work well with. We have past experience with and, I worked with Atkins on projects in my previous work. Bill worked with this particular senior VP in his previous. And so we want to bring to you all a master service agreement with this, with Atkins, against which we can write individual task orders that will also be bringing to you to, to manage this plethora of stuff that we've got. We're gonna need, we need help, we need bandwidth, we need people staying on top of things. We need people talking to GDOT, talking to city covingtons, engineer, et cetera, very actively. Not to mention, we need to design the trail that we got nine hundred thousand dollars for, which is gonna include some environmental review requirement. There's just, there's a lot going on and a lot that has time sensitivity to it. And we've got, we need some help to do it. And so we, we're proposing that we hire on this, this consultancy. And the way we do it is to, again, a master service agreement, like an idea of future, George, indefinite delivery, indefinite funding type contract, but it would be called a master service agreement against which we would write task orders, which would have individual budgets and fee schedules and all that. But it just kind of gets everything in place. And then we've got some specific scopes that we'll bring already, and we know we're bringing, like designing the trail and looking at the road improvements that are in need to be done that I mentioned on Soul Street. So those are things that just, we need some help on, and we want to get some help. So we bring that to you all.
We didn't talk about dollars.
Well, we'll be bringing, when we know what the dollars are, like, for example, they're gonna, they're gonna bring us a proposal for doing, for doing the, the design, engineering, basic assessment and design engineering of that Soul Street part. And they'll, they'll bring that specific proposal, and we'll know, well, okay, for them to do this, it'll cost this amount. Do we wanna do it? Because they're not gonna do it. Pretty much gonna have to do it, no matter how we're gonna pay for it. The, the, they're gonna bring us an individual proposal on designing and engineering the trail section from Williams Road slash East Soul down to Wade Street, East Wade slash I twenty as well. So those, each individual project will have a scope and a budget and will be brought forward for approval. But we'll have the basic vehicle in place.
At the same time, from what you're saying, though, we need them to be involved in Project Jane likely immediately.
So then the other piece of it is, we do wanna set in place a sort of pro, a project management scope, which has a set dollar amount that we've decided as a council that we will set aside and say, there's this universal stuff we need help with, like following up with meetings with Covington's city manager, or city engineer, following up GDOT district engineer, you know, working with us as our engineering rep in talking about the Overpass Bridge and all that, all that stuff. I mean, I'm just, all these things, it's more project management stuff, kind of helping to make sure that we're continuing to drive things forward. And we have trouble doing because frankly, at the end of the day, Bill and I both end up with like two dozen emails left open that we haven't even get to, and Matt had the same experience. So we just need, we need that additional bandwidth to keep driving those things forward. And I'm talking about mainly the things that, that need, that are pressing and that have program manager or product management responsibilities. So that would be, we'll, we'll bring you what that dollar amount would be. Once we, you know, hear from them like, well, here's what we think it would be, and then we'll get you all to approve that. And then that would be advantage more like a cost-plus contract. And then we'll have the budget there, we'll track how much we're spending against that. And if we're, we didn't spend it all, we got that money to roll forward. If we need more, we'll come to.
Is that something that you're looking to tie into the capital budget because it's gonna go over years?
Those projects that have, that are associated with capital expenditure, well, yeah, I mean, some things will be.
I mean, the road, the road, the electric and the water, they're all obvious.
Yes, that's why I'm saying, like, when we start talking about capital budget, this, this right here is what in my mind is driving the capital budget, is all those things that we are responding to, but we're also proactively moving forward on that we wanna, we wanna make sure we've got the budget program forward and that we are executing them smartly instead of saying, boy, I wish we could do this.
Right.
Find ourselves a year from now, we didn't move it.
Is this the same outfit that you pulled to represent us on East Soul Street concerning that electric mass project there?
The, um.
That you said.
What they would do, what they could do for us, George, they would be our engineer, they would, they have people who are also energy, electrical, you know, electrical engineering experts that will work with us on that as well. Yes, that will make sure that we are not just dependent on what MEAG and ECG tell us.
We're paying MEAG and ECG to do this for us.
Out of our, they, they do it for free based on, you know, the, the.
They charge, they charge us man-hours, a cost of our budget off this shit. I mean, I usually deal with free, you know.
It's part of the.
The contract that we have with MEAG that we signed for, I'm sure you did last year, puts in that they'll do certain consultancy as part of the overall payment.
Yes.
Into.
Yes, and they haven't indicated that there'll be any additional costs.
The only additional cost is gonna be the cost of a new substation. And they, what they'll do with that is they'll build that into our billing and then we'll pass that on through the rate to the customer. So they, they put the, it's like an eight-hundred thousand dollar substation or something like that, I think is what they say. And then we pay them back over, or pay that back over time. But no, this is, yes, we are paying them, we're paying them.
With the revenue from having won the electric.
Well, no, no, we're paying ECG and MEAG, they, they.
We have a contract each year with them.
They include a certain amount of support.
Right, but for the station. So we're not gonna build the station unless we win the contract.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Right, so then that would be.
That would be only associated with the need for the additional capacity.
Yes.
You're right, that makes sense.
So this is open knowledge now, is that correct?
I'm sorry, go ahead, too.
I've got a couple of questions, actually. This is, like many other ideas, sounds like a great idea. How are we going, what is it gonna be the process to avoid duplications of things such as we've had in the past? I already see one on here that's a duplication of things we've already done. For instance, with all due respect to everybody involved, we got fourteen studies, sixteen studies upstairs, and we just had another one done. Is this gonna collect dust? Is this going to be a duplication of efforts forward, moving forward? How are we gonna avoid that?
You know, the intent here with this, Jim, is that they will.
That was the intent before, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, is a specific programming document that says, here's the, the dollar amount of time that is scheduled for executed. And then we have the assistance from the consultancy to move us forward on those.
Is that number ten, is that number ten we're talking about?
Well, that's something, yeah, seven, seven.
Ten is the town center development, which has got, um.
Number seven is a box full of things that you and I worked on upstairs.
The wayfinding plan.
Like, it took us about two days to find it. Finally, Stacy figured out where it was, I think that's right.
That's not a wayfinding plan, that's just.
What is it?
It's a walking and driving tour in the city, but it's not a wayfinding plan.
That's not a wayfinding plan?
Not for people visiting the town to find the city.
You don't give them one of those and they can't find their way around? We might not want them to miss in that town.
I mean, one thing that, when we met with Atkins the other day, I mean, they, we showed them the box of plans that we have now and the three-ring binder that's this thick, and that's one of the first things they wanna do is meet with us.
That's not what I'm talking about.
I'm aware of that, but I'm saying the wayfinding plan that you're talking about, the thing you hand out is not a wayfinding plan. That is a tour of the city. That's a very different.
What does a wayfinding plan give us?
We don't have a wayfinding.
Well, if we were to have one, what would be in it? What is an engineering company gonna do for us in that regard?
That's a possible task order, Joe, I don't know why you get so virulently, like, kinda hostile about this, but Brian Bolick did the wayfinding plan for the Olympics. He was in charge of the entire Olympics wayfinding plan.
And, and Kay did that upstairs, and she was one of her.
But that's not a wayfinding plan.
Well, what is a wayfinding?
A wayfinding plan is, I'm driving here from Atlanta and I need to know how to get to X. Not take a tour of all the homes in town or find out where all the, you know, interesting little tidbits are. I just need to find a particular building or park or facility or whatever. And so it's a, it's a way of lining up a family of signs that match how people would naturally drive their car to look for something, and that's not what we have written on.
And then I have a committee we're working on.
But that's not a wayfinding plan, that's a tour of the town. I don't know why we're talking about this in so detail, it's just a.
The thing is.
You say this, actually, why we're talking about it.
Okay.
Because for the last fifteen years.
Right.
We have went over the same stuff over and over and over and never did, whoever take away to do it and nothing happened. That's why.
Right, well.
That's why we've done all this fifteen times and nothing has happened. That's why.
Well, you have never done a wayfinding plan. You have never done a wayfinding plan.
Okay, you say so.
I think is this engineering firm is not going to produce another plan binder, like of stuff to do. This, this is going to be an engineering firm that, that helps us basically bid the, the electrical for the Project Jane thing and redo our road. So they're going to be a proactive engineering force.
Well, they're also gonna help us actually do the things we've been talking about doing for the last fifteen years.
One of the problems the city's had is, like, for instance, this complete streets program we're working on now, like, that's being done by a non-engineer, we're all non-engineers. We're gonna produce a document that really doesn't take us anywhere in terms of construction.
Just plan.
Right, and so what they would do is create, if they did put together a quote, a document, it would be the first layer of creating construction documents. In other words, it, it takes it from point A to point B.
This is an actuating firm. This is not a.
I, I'll just put it in simple terms, so.
Thank you.
Brian Bolick is a senior vice president with this company. If we go with anyone else, I will never be able to talk to the senior vice president.
I'm not suggesting.
I'm just explaining, I'm just explaining, I'm just explaining. So this is an eighteen thousand, three hundred employee company, and Brian likes me. I like Brian, we know each other. I can call him on his cell phone almost, you know, when he's driving into work or when he's at work, and he'll answer the phone. So I really feel, and let me tell you this too, that he has the oldest house in Forsyth County. He loves history, he's, I mean, I just know that his way of thinking about touches and details and things are important, plus the fact he's just a really good civil engineer. He designed an award-winning roundabout at Emery Circle, I think it's called. It's a, it's a huge project that won awards in Atlanta, has a very good relationship with Emery. And what he would be doing, I mean, we started talking about GDOT and this grant, because the grant for the nine-hundred thousand dollars is going through GDOT, which even the congressman's office doesn't seem to understand. And for some reason, the documents that we turned in say there's no environmental. I mean, there's got to be an environmental done. And so he's already on the phone talking to a lady who retired from G. so he's already on the phone, talking to a lady who retired from GDOT, who now works for Atkins, that's looking into what are we going to need to do, and that's the depth that Atkins can give us, that I can access because I have a relationship with Brian Bolick. We're not going to be paying for Brian Bolick all the time because he's very expensive, but, so, but, let me explain, I mean, he wants, we're all of the mindset, we've got to stop this idea of just planning things, and we want to start doing things. I mean, that's the problem that I saw when I interviewed you, is the short-term work program just keeps, we just keep erasing the dates and adding the same list, year after year.
Anyone understand why I keep asking the questions?
Right, and so, we're trying to get, we're trying to.
But I want to know what the deliverables are, that we're going to, okay.
Right, well, it's to start constructing things, I mean, that's what we've got to start moving on, is.
Well, maybe, maybe we have to.
Yeah, Jim, I wouldn't start with that one, because there's so many other things, I mean, when I say, when I say I wouldn't start with that, we could actually be doing concurrently with all this other stuff, because you've got a firm that has, you know, if we've got the budget, we can move forward with it.
Well, let me ask my second question, because, you know, everybody's getting tired, several of us have yawned several times. The, the other question is, do you hope, and is it possible, and do you expect this, these people to be involved in the comprehensive plan?
The comprehensive plan frankly is kind of more one of these perfunctory things you do, it's a statement, it should reflect, right, our vision of the town and our policy of that, but it's not itself an implementable plan.
That's why you put me on the committee.
No, I want you to make sure that it does align with what we want to actually do, but it tends to be this sort of, you know, ah, we're a city about this, and we're about that, and here's our different characters, and that.
Kind of a check in the box.
It's not a, it's not really, what the hell are we going to do each year for the next five years that move us towards our objectives?
Well, that's one of our problems right there, it's up to us to make our comprehensive plan be something that is effective, that is usable, and not a perfunctory thing, just to be turned into state.
If we wanted them involved with it, they would be involved with it, but if what we've typically done is, we just use Northeast Georgia, and they do like the standard thing, right?
And I greatly appreciate that, that you just said, but you've already said, you and I had that conversation before, I don't object to that, I just, I am charged with asking questions.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm in charge with asking unpopular questions, uncomfortable questions, and all the other questions I can think of, that's my job, and I'm going to do it, and I'm going to be a pain in the butt until I get the answers I want.
Well, you're not going to be a pain in the butt to me, I'm here to answer questions, that's my job, so it never bothers me when you ask a question, so when you, when you talk to me as if you're being a pain in my butt, it's just not true, I mean, I'm here to answer questions, it doesn't bother me.
Maybe if you're a pain in the side, but not in the.
No, I mean, it's not a pain at all, it's what I get paid that is.
I mean, we all want to go home, but you gave us a document.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And your, this kind of a comment was about capital budget, as this kind of, your thoughts of what was going on in the city, and that's what Project Jane and the solar and all that stuff is about, okay? But then some of the other items over here are more capital budget driven, that are things that are going on, so this document, if you will, is kind of a blend of things, and not necessarily what this firm is going to be.
This is more about, this is more, what this is more is trying to say.
Well, we got crap on.
We got a whole lot on the vernon, right?
Yeah.
We got, or another, we've got a whole lot of plates spinning, and we don't want any of the plates to break, and in fact, we really need certain plates to really spin, so we've got to have some help to make sure that we.
But this is, this is what you, they'll see as projects that are filling the plates up.
Well, some of the stuff is like stuff we've talked about that we want to do, and so if we want to do it, we want to successfully win this for this electric utility, we need some help to make sure that we can do that.
We definitely do, because none of us are qualified to do what you're asking about on this.
Exactly.
So, right, but most of this stuff can wait, and what we really need to engage the firm for, as I kind of see this, we have to have very serious and firmly held priorities, and we have to secure the Project Jane contracts, and that, and then attend to, and attend to the road, those things have to be number one. If we do get the electrical contract, then we will be flush with bucks to continue to engage this engineering firm to further self-actualize our lovely wish list, which is what I see this as. These are things we would like to do, but, but they're down on our priority scale, so we have to, the big thing, the sugar daddy here is that electrical contract, which we have got to.
That's why those two are.
I think I should clarify though, that Emery is, as far as we understand, you can correct me, but Emery is intending to move forward with the solar field regardless of Project Jane, and we don't know.
Right.
The extent of that, but they're talking about something rather large, I mean, which is different than what we, at least I understood.
What they said, what they said is, they're willing to explore how over, like, the maximum that can be done on their property, like, use as much as you.
Diminishes their dependency on our electricity.
Well, we don't know, we could be selling that power, they'll have to wheel it through us, I guess, is that.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is, they can't do anything without us, it's, and.
So, they'd be like me, only with a really big solar roof, selling it back into the grid through OX.
So, it's just kind of, that's part of the question, right, is like, if it, so there's, there's, there's one thing is, doing the solar development so that we can say, we are producing all the power you guys are using is being produced over here, or maybe not all, a big chunk is being produced over here.
Right.
And that's visual, but we're, they, as they've said, this Project Jane company said, we want a hundred percent of our electric power to come from renewable, so if we want to win their contract, we've got to show them how we're providing that. If we look, what?
Make sure they understand that we can provide.
We can provide, exactly, we can, we have a plan for how we will.
Correct.
And we can, if we.
So, that's part of the project.
But then, then there's this, so even if we don't, there is demand on the market for renewable power, and Emery's willing to keep going, and so, and MEAG's interested in, because they've got actually some of their other cities, I mean, you realize, we didn't get all that we asked for, Covington didn't get all that we asked for, to bear, Covington basically told me, they probably buy some of that solar power, so suddenly, then it becomes us making sure that it isn't just MEAG making money off of something's going on in our city, that we're getting our cut, our share, and all that, but all that just takes.
Yes, coordination.
It is extremely time consuming and exhausting to stay on top of all this stuff.
Okay, so this engineering firm, I guess I'm just trying to get a clear picture of what this firm is doing, they are not helping us with a study that's going to.
They're going to actualize all the stuff.
They're going to help us actualize in a prioritized manner, things that will.
Starting the page one, which is these three things are all time sensitive.
Thank you, that's what I had, you were saying.
That's the whole problem, seeing as we didn't start out with them, we were asking if these people are going to do this now.
Well, I did start, I started, I said, to be with Project Jane, just making a lot of things, there's a lot of things we have to do because of that project, like, road improvements.
Can I make one last statement?
Yes.
Bill, listen up, okay? This is referring to what you just said a moment ago. I am a firm believer, if you want to get things done, it's not necessarily what you know, it's who you know, correct? I don't want to get something done, I pick up this phone, I call people I know, and I say, I need something done, can you do it? And if you can do it, get it done, thank you.
Well, and that's one of the other things that's very rejuvenating about talking about Brian, is he knew, he knows all the different pots of money that we can apply forward and get, that we, you know, can utilize, so it's also about leveraging what we have to get more, but we have to have the capability to even take advantage of it.
And using people in the right positions.
And knowing, yeah, knowing who's going to call.
You'll get it.
I don't have any issues with all that, but I personally found this, when you link the engineering firm to this in a very confusing way.
Sorry, my apologies.
You know, I'm just simple minded, that's all, we have to keep that clear.
That's fine, I apologize, the problem, thanks for your excuse, but just, the main thing I want, y'all to take whatever that is, we got it on our plate, we need some help to get things, to make sure we move forward and we move forward successfully.
If we can get the help, people will know.
And to large point, if we are successful with item number one, and we win the electric power, it's just transformational, the amount of things we could do, these aspirations we're doing.
So, it's motivational for that engineering firm to help us nail that contract, because then we can continue to employ them. David, is this public knowledge now, before we were told not to speak about?
Project Jane is the term that the state has used to talk about, it's not the name of the.
It's not that we talked about.
It's the code name for this project, and they have been willing to say in public that there is a development.
Okay, I just wanted to.
They can't say who it is.
Okay.
I know as a company, I've met with a VP.
Right, right, but we talked about it earlier, and I just wanted to make sure before we say anything publicly, how much is.
I tried to take off all the references to the streets here.
Sorry, I said the streets, but, I mean, it's, that part was really.
Okay, so it's still quiet, that's fine, thank you, I wanted clarity on that, I had to see that.
We can't talk about the, because we're. Too much specifics about it, we just, we can't talk, everything we talk about. Well, that's, I mean, honestly, the, oh, one last thing, though, sorry, because it's Jody, this is important for Jody, just is, before we all go, and then you can just call it back, is, so, every year for the last umpteen years.
Twenty twelve.
Twenty twelve, we've been, we've been piggybacking off of Covington's bidding process for the tree service, that goes and does the line trimming, keeps the trees off our lines, we want to do that again this year, they changed a little bit about how they're calculating their costs, they're using a per mile instead of.
Yeah, per mile, not an hour.
But it's still, essentially, we want to, we want to do that, we want to avoid having to go through our own bidding process and all that, we want to say, they've already been bided out, vetted through Covington, the rates are already determined, but we just need to then get you all to approve a dollar amount to then put on contract with them, for them to move out, I just, we just want to make sure we don't have to.
We're getting about twenty-five thousand dollars in budget for that a year.
Yes, sir, it is, Mr. Jim, they've done a spectacular job since we've been using them, and Covington keeps them all year, because it's such a good crew, we use a certain amount, whatever, we got budget, we use.
That's what we do twenty-five percent of the city roughly every year.
Well, we're trying to, but we need to put more money in the budget.
Exactly, with the inflation and costs, and that's my little cost of not getting a whole quarter trimmed, Mr. Jim, every year, so it's taking me five years to rotate, where it was taking me four, if that makes any sense.
But, yeah, so y'all are okay with us using that, same process and moving forward, we don't have to go through another bidding process?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good, we'll bring the actual dollar amount to you at the meeting. All right, let's call it a night. Are we meeting next? Oh, yeah, I think we will, unless we run into getting say a problem, shoot for next Monday for a work session.